Okay, welcome everyone. We are now live. Welcome to everyone in person and watching the livestream to the June 8th Board of Directors meeting. With that, I'd ask you all to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where Richard stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so welcome to what looks to be a very extensive agenda. I'm excited for it, but we've got, we'll go ahead and move on. We've got three different public comment sections and lots to cover. But super exciting as we start off, we're going to start with a public hearing on the approved budget. And I would turn it over to Mr. Rose.
Good evening. Thank you. It's so exciting to see such a large group out here to watch us pass the budget. That's fantastic. As you know, Board members, Oregon budget law requires public school districts to adopt their budgets by resolution no later than June 30th of each fiscal year. The Sherwood School District Budget Committee was presented with the superintendent's proposed budget on April 18th, 2022, and that committee reviewed the budget and gave the opportunity for public testimony. Discussion included district reserves, insurance markets, staffing levels, and deferred maintenance. And then the committee voted to approve the budget as submitted with no changes. The approved budget is now before the board for a public hearing, allowing further testimony from the public and consideration by the board. The budget as approved by the Budget Committee at their meeting on April 18th remains unchanged and no further changes are recommended by the administration. The total budget for the general fund is $61,104,856. And the total budget for all funds is $101,830,978. After the hearing, the board may make limited changes to the approved budget. Local budget law allows the board to lower expenditures in any fund or to increase expenditures in any fund, limited to 10% of that fund. Once board consideration is complete, the board must take action to adopt the budget. And that will be our next step after public hearing.
Okay, that's my understanding. We have no public comments related to the budget. So I guess with that, we can go ahead and conclude the public hearing. Okay, so we will move on to the action items regarding the budget. And again, Mr. Rose.
Thank you. Our next step is the adoption of the two resolutions that will officially create our budget and the necessary supporting steps.
Madam Chair. Just want to warn folks, these resolutions are a bit lengthy, so bear with us a little bit. Be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Sherwood School District hereby adopts the budget as approved by the Budget Committee on April 18th, 2022, for the fiscal year 2022-2023, in the total amount of $101,830,978. This budget is now in file in the office of the Superintendent in Sherwood, Oregon. Be it further resolved that the amount shown in Exhibit A to this resolution for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and for the purposes indicated within the funds listed, are hereby appropriated. Be it finally resolved that the Board of Directors for the Sherwood School District, ADHA, hereby imposes the taxes provided for in the adopted budget at the rate of $4.8123 per 1,000 assessed value for operations, and then the amount of $15,371,195 for bonds, and that these taxes are hereby imposed and categorized for the tax year 2022-2023 upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the district.
Do I hear a second? Second, any comments, questions, discussion among the board? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have a budget. Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Oh, Madam Chair, we got, we got one more here.
I thought you had both. Sorry.
Oh, nope.
My apologies. Yeah.
Okay, we also have a resolution establishing commitments and policies for fund balances. These are including the 2021-2022 ending fund balances, the 2022-23 revenue commitments, and the 21-2022 ending fund balance assignments. These are all included in the official paperwork that was filed with our board packet. And so I make a motion that we approve it as presented.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, now we have a budget. Thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we're going to go ahead and move on to our, the reason most of you are here, which is the spotlight on. It's a favorite of the board. And what I'm going to ask, we're going to shift some things around because we have a special guest that may have to leave. So with your kind permission, what I'd like to do is go ahead and recognize the spring athletes and then introduce the new administrators and then we'd like to honor Dr. Cordy a little bit early. So we'll go ahead and do that. So with that, I would turn the podium over to Mr. Mitchell. It looks like you are on. Thank you.
Superintendent Cordy, Chair Hecker, Board of Directors, thank you for having me here today to talk about our spring athletic and activities results. As you've seen in the board packet, we have an unbelievable amount of all-league honors, high places by our teams. And so I just want to go through and we'd be here, we're going to be here a long time. And I don't want to add anymore to that because there are tons of them and there's so many things to celebrate. So I'm going to go through a few highlights. Our baseball team had a great bit of success. They finished second in the league and made it to the state quarterfinals in some really exciting playoff games. We did have, among our, our all-league players, we had a, the league player of the year in Ian Oumlant. Our softball team finished first in the league, made it to the first round of state. Our track and field girls were first in the league and first in districts. Boys were second in league, first in districts, and ended up sixth at state. Our girls tennis team was first in league, first in district, and also sixth at state. Our boys tennis finished third in the league, third in the district. Our girls golf finished first in the league and 13th at state with Audrey Bond being the player of the year for the league. Our boys golf team finished second in the league and fifth at regionals, and one of Cohen Gladheim made it into the state tournament. Girls lacrosse finished fourth in the league. Boys lacrosse finished second in the league and made it to the state, second round of the state playoffs. Our speech and debate team, we had many students go to the state tournament, including the state champion in parliamentary debate in Dominic Zanarga, Zangara, and Andy Ard. Concert choir finished first in the league. Wind Ensemble was second in all of the 6A state. And in our wind, small ensemble and soloists, Logan Vaughn and Stella Colson, both finished first place and were state champions. So again, those are highlights of a lot of the teams and a few of our individuals who finished with very high places. But as you can see, it is a long list of people who were recognized for their outstanding achievements and we're very proud of all of them. So thank you for allowing us to recognize them here tonight.
That is fantastic. Thank you. Okay, and with that, I will turn the mic over to Dr. Cordy to introduce administrators.
All right. Thank you, Chair Hecker. Good evening, everybody. We have the exciting opportunity this evening to introduce two of our newest administrators to our Sherwood School District administrative family. And we will be introducing Emily Anderson, who is going to be the new Associate Principal at Sherwood Middle School, and Amy Green, who will be our new Associate Director of Student Services. And to hear a little bit more about them and to also hear from them, we are going to be inviting other administrators up to introduce them. So Ms. Thunderhide, we'd like to welcome you up to the podium along with Ms. Anderson.
It's a team effort from here on out, Emily. So Superintendent Cordy, Chair Hecker, and Board of Directors, thank you for the opportunity to share our exciting, our excitement about having Emily Anderson join our administrative team and specifically becoming our new Associate Principal at Sherwood Middle School. Emily has been in education for 17 years and 10 of them have been in our district. She started as a math teacher at Laurel Ridge and quickly moved into leadership roles both at Laurel Ridge Middle School and Sherwood Middle School. She has served as a PLC leader, an instructional coach, and most recently, a dean of students. Emily is a natural leader, a skilled problem solver, and there are many traits I appreciate about her. Her passion, her calmness, her openness, and her desire and ability to make connections with middle school students shines through each and every day. She is a servant leader and makes herself available to all staff. Emily has earned the respect of her colleagues, students, and families, and I can't think of a better person to be the next Associate Principal at Sherwood Middle School. Congratulations, Emily. I look forward to our partnership. Get up here. We, we practice this as we serve our SMS community.
Yeah. No, you have to stay. Okay. All right, she'll stay. Superintendent Cordy, Chair Hecker, and Board of Directors, thank you. I'm incredibly humbled and excited to continue my work in the Sherwood School District as an Associate Principal at Sherwood Middle School. As I look around the room and around the pole, I realize that we're all here tonight for, for different reasons. Our past to get here all a little unique and part of our own story. And as different as our past are, the reality is that there is a common thread that ties us all together, and that's our love for, for kids and for students, whether they're your own kids or whether they're our kids in our classroom. And I became an educator because I love working with our youth. I love working with adults. I love working with people in general. I have an internal desire to lead, to support people, to, to motivate, to bridge connections, and ultimately have the most positive impact on as many humans as possible. These qualities have been modeled for me through a number of leaders in the districts that I've had the privilege to work for and with over the years, to name a few. Steve Emmert, Penny Psalm, our current administrative team led by boss lady, Principal Mary Ann Thunderhide. Thank you all for your mentorship and belief in me as a leader. It means the world. When I think specifically about middle school and the middle level, I reflect on what a unique age it is to be a middle schooler. You couldn't pay me enough to be 12, 13, or 14 again. There's just no way. But in the same breath, I recognize how crucial these three years are in a child's, in a child's life, and how much impact this time has on a person's self-efficacy and identity as a student and a human. And because I recognize the significance of that, the middle level is really where my heart is. And what's amazing about the middle level and Sherwood specifically is that I'm surrounded by a group of adults who actually feel the same way about middle school students. We have a staff committed to providing access and opportunity for all students and are actively working to remove barriers that might impede that progress. It's not a perfect system and we obviously have work ahead of us, but it's work we're committed to and passionate about. I'm really looking forward to continuing this work in this role in this coming year and strengthening partnerships with students, families, and staff to continue to serve the community and the district is an honor. Thank you.
Congratulations, Emily. Welcome to the team. We're so proud of you. And next up, I'd like to welcome Erin Gonzalez-Randalls. She is the incoming Director of Student Services, and Amy Green, who is joining our team and will be the new Associate Director of Student Services. So Erin, we'll turn the mic over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Board of Directors, Chair Hecker, and Superintendent Cordy. I'm really excited to introduce Amy Green to the Sherwood School District as our new Associate Director of Student Services. Amy is an experienced educational leader with a really strong background of working to support the success of all students. She began her career as a school psychologist in North Clackamas School District. And in addition, she's supported the Special Education Department in Oregon City School District as a special ed coordinator and the district as a whole as an MTSS or multi-tiered system of support coordinator. Amy has served most recently as an Assistant Principal at the elementary level in Oregon City. And she rose to the top of our very strong candidate pool due to her commitment to ensuring that all students have access to an engaging and inclusive educational experience. She has passion for helping to build relationships, connections, and a sense of belonging for all individuals. So I'm really looking forward to partnering with Amy and working together to support the students, families, and staff members in the Sherwood School District. Please join me in welcoming Amy Green.
Thank you, Erin, for those kind and very generous words. Thank you, Chair Hecker, Superintendent Cordy, and the members of the board for your trust in me. My purpose as a leader of educational systems has always been to remove barriers that may inhibit students from accessing a rigorous educational experience, and I'm thrilled to continue that work here in Sherwood in a district that has that as a core value. I'm excited to jump into Student Services, and I know the work of Student Services is exceedingly complex. Each student brings different assets and strength. Each family has different priorities and hopes for their students' future. And now more than ever, it's crucial that we slow down and listen deeply to the voices of students and families as we work together in partnership to build plans to support students' academic success, social, emotional competence, and increased independence. I am extraordinarily humbled and honored for the opportunity to serve in the Sherwood School District, and I'm thankful and look forward to getting to know each and every one of you over the next few months. Thank you.
Welcome, and thank you so much for choosing Sherwood. And so we're going to switch things around. So Mr. Emmert, you are on, and we're going to spotlight on for Dr. Cordy.
So I'll have Mr. Bennett join me up here tonight, and then after a few words, then we'll invite Chair Hecker up to say a few words as well. So good evening, Superintendent Cordy, Board Chair Hecker, and Board of Directors. It's our, our privilege tonight to get to honor Dr. Cordy after 12 amazing years of service in the Sherwood School District. 12 years ago, following the departure of a well-loved superintendent, the board hired a leader from the Redmond School District. Little did we know the huge impact Heather Cordy would have in the Sherwood School District in 12 short years. For these past years, she's led our district fearlessly and with heart in the face of challenging situations, always keeping the best interest of our students and staff at the core of her decision-making. When thinking of Heather and her leadership, some of our colleagues shared the following. Seven years ago, we decided to move our entire family into the Sherwood community. We moved here like many families do for the strength of our schools. Not only do our kids attend here, but we both work here and know firsthand what an amazing district this is. A big reason for that is that Heather has been at the helm guiding us. The district has thrived under her leadership and direction. Another stated, "The impact Heather has made in her time served here is like no other. For generations to come, this community and team will experience the substantial and life-changing positive influence and products from integrity, creativity, collaboration, dedication, vision, honesty, and pure grit. We've learned to never settle for anything other than what is best for kids. You are an original, Heather Cordy. We are forever changed and better because of you." Shirley Sandberg once said, "Leadership is about making others better as a result of your presence and making sure that impact lasts in your absence. I cannot think of better words to describe Dr. Cordy's leadership over the past years. The impact of her accomplishments will serve Sherwood students and families for many years to come. Heather, thank you for making us all a little bit better. Dr. Cordy will be greatly missed in Sherwood. Personally, I come from a family of educators, worked in education in many states and districts, both in the public and private sectors, and understand to my core that it is truly rare to find someone in educational leadership that exhibits the many great qualities and characteristics that Dr. Cordy does. Her professionalism, empathy, ethics, fairness, strength, values, passion for students, and interest in other stories has been invaluable and will certainly be missed. I know that our district has thrived under her leadership. The Beaverton School District is blessed to have her, and I wish her all the best in her new adventures. Thank you, Dr. Cordy, for all that you've given and provided for Sherwood over these past years. It's recognized and appreciated more than you'll ever know. Heather is a kind of leader that inspires others to be their best versions. She is thoughtful, courageous, supportive, and above all, cares deeply for the staff and students in our district. Other descriptive words were things such as courageous, compassionate, strong, a mentor, a friend, vulnerable, transparent. And on a personal note, I just want to thank Heather for her leadership and friendship. I've appreciated your ability to lead with courage and honesty, to admit your mistakes, to laugh even during the challenging times, to forgive, and to care deeply even when you needed to be cared for. I also want to thank Tony, who is here tonight, and their boys for their amazing support they provided Heather through the years. You always knew when she was having a big day in the district because she had a giant bouquet of flowers, as she does tonight, on her table from her supportive husband. Heather, you'll be greatly missed and forever remembered. At this time, I'll turn it over to Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Emmert. Superintendent Cordy. I knew the last thing you would want was a bunch of attention and public recognition as you move into your new role, but nonetheless, here we go. Just so you know, I didn't let her know that I was coming up here until about 15 minutes before the meeting because I knew she might tell me no. But from the time we met, I thought you were a special leader. It turned out that I was correct. In fact, more correct than I really knew at the time. Let's just talk about the few things that you've led us through. So when you arrived, you, you probably remember that we were deep in the middle of the Great Recession. Your first year, we had to cut a million bucks out of the budget. The second year, it was two more. The third year, it was more after that. But all of this was done with a process that you put together with the input of staff, the input of the community, the input of your team, the input of the board. Super collaborative process took hours and hours, deep in the weeds. We worked as a team and as a community to identify reductions that minimize the impact to kids and minimize the impact to families and our staff. Even though the choices we faced were really hard, the process you developed and led brought us through those times with relationships intact and the trust of our community intact. That's quite a feat. But that's not the only one. Soon as we got through the Great Recession, we found ourselves having serious capacity issues. The high school was way over capacity. Other schools in the district were also over capacity. Kids having classes in portables, not enough places for kids to eat lunch. And from that brought us the 2016 bond process. Once again, you led a community engagement process that really listened carefully to what the community had to say and acted on what they wanted and what they told us. There were many great ideas we incorporated, but one really comes to mind. I don't know how many people know this. When we were processing how to go about expanding capacity in the district, staff was thinking we would expand our existing schools. The idea to build a new high school came out of those community listening sessions. That was from the community, and it ended up being what we ended up doing. It was a great idea, and that's what happens when you really listen. And I appreciate you putting, it was not on our radar at all to do that, and it turned out to be the right move. And when you ran the numbers financially, it was for sure the right move in the long term. That turned out to be the easy part. Once the bond was passed, you jumped into action without getting into all the details of what happened. And the people who know what happened behind the scenes know all of the amazing work that you did to make this happen. You delivered this bond on time despite a pandemic, on budget despite a pandemic and supply chain issues. You might recall we had steel tariffs going on at the time, which jacked up the price dramatically, still landed it on time. And I think what most people probably don't know is the scope of work significantly larger than what was promised in the original bond. So find me another superintendent who can say that about their work and their leadership. Before the bond even finished, the pandemic struck. You not only led us through the process of competing the bond, but of educating kids in a pandemic. And this was a no-win situation because Sherwood, just like the nation, was terribly divided. And so knowing that, you led us to prioritize two things. Maximizing instructional time for our kids and not laying off our staff. The results again speak for themselves. We had live instruction for our kids five days a week, and for a longer day, the most districts in the district, in the, in the area, and I don't know of another district that gave five days a week of instruction in comprehensive distance learning. We're the only one I know of. Because of the planning upfront, when we returned to in-person instruction, we had the most in-person minutes by a long, long ways of any district in the metro area. It wasn't even close. And we didn't lay off any staff. And we just passed a budget with healthy reserves coming out the tail end of that. But leading through all these events is really just a byproduct of who you are as a leader. You focused on building a team of administrators that grew professionally under your leadership. You mentored administrators, teachers, and other staff, giving hours of your time to help us as we navigated the associated challenges in our careers. You mentored dozens of women who were seeking to expand their careers and helping them navigate those unique challenges as they tried to lead. You developed relationships with staff across the districts that is almost impossible to do from the superintendent's chair. I've seen the numerous cards in your office and heard the things staff have said to me to hear you're leaving. Sorry, I'm getting choked up. You're always willing to make the hard decision, never shying away from the tip of the spear, and the tip of the spear is pretty darn sharp in your chair. You've never shied away from hard conversations. I can absolutely verify that because I've been the recipient of a few of those, and I think there's a few people in the crowd who are probably nodding their heads, thinking the same thing. But most of all, Heather, I just appreciate your friendship. I know our time leading together has come to an end, or coming to an end. But I know our friendship will endure. Beaverton is lucky to have you. Thank you for your service.
Okay, so I'm inviting a couple of my friends to join me. I told myself all day I wasn't going to get emotional, but thanks a lot, Gary. That's really fantastic. Oh, well done. So, so I'm going to add my two cents, and I'm probably going to have to read it because it's just going to be easier for me. So more than 12 years ago, I had the distinct pleasure of hiring Heather Cordy. Our board, and a couple of the board members are here with me tonight, interviewed her on a Saturday, at which time she became our top candidate. And we knew that there was another district coming to do a site visit in Redmond on Tuesday. So we jokingly said, "We're going Monday," and we absolutely went Monday. Connie and I jumped in her van at 7:30 a.m. and headed over the mountain to beat our competition. So remarkably, Heather agreed to all of this, and somehow, over literally one day, a Sunday nonetheless, had, had an entire day planned for us. We were there for hours and hours and went to different schools and talked to a variety of, of folks from administrators to students. It was remarkable, and we, we made a quick phone call to the board chair and said, "We got to do this," and we, we hired her pretty much on the spot and made sure that the next people coming on Tuesday didn't ever get to do it. So, so that, that was, that was the start. It didn't take long for Superintendent Cordy to rise to the top of the superintendents in Oregon. There was no doubt we had chosen a rising star. Heather's urge to leadership has included so many different groups, Washington County superintendents, the ESD. She's she's, and several other organizations, and I definitely don't know all of them. In addition, she's taken time to mentor teachers, administrators, and colleagues. And it's no accident that numerous current principals and administrators in the state of Oregon have direct links to Sherwood, all benefiting from Heather's coaching and support. Over the course of her tenure, she's been bold in her decisions. On more than one occasion, she even moved staff members into different roles that leveraged their strengths to benefit the district. Her ability to cultivate relationships spilled over in her collaborative work with the Classified and Teachers Associations, Sherwood Police Department, and City of Sherwood, to name a few. We've all shared in so much over the past 12 years. Although there have been great moments of struggle over a recession, the loss of loved ones, and sorry, most recently, the anguish of a pandemic. But thankfully, there are far more moments to celebrate. Programs sustained through that recession through a shared sacrifice of every staff member in this district, a bond that was supported and passed by the community, leading to the most amazing new high school in the state and the most comprehensive middle school, and buildings repurposed for students and community. Along the way, Superintendent Cordy managed to claim victory over greedy developers threatening to hinder plans for the new high school, setting a new precedent in the state of Oregon. Under Dr. Cordy's leadership, Sherwood proudly and consistently maintains one of the highest graduation rates. Student test scores are excellent. Dual credit for Sherwood High Schoolers leads the state year over year. Sherwood has award-winning programs in band, athletics, dance, choir, performing arts, and so many other categories. I could go on and on, but instead, in closing, I just want to share an observation. And that is since day one, Heather Cordy came to Sherwood and set aside a day each week to be in schools. She has continued to prioritize spending time with staff and students in the classroom. And in doing so, she has sent a powerful message as a student-focused leader. Heather values the time spent with students. I would like to not only thank Dr. Cordy for her years of service, but also her family, Tony, Tanner, and Zach. Thank you for being a role model, Heather, a mentor, a leader, and a coach to all of us. Your actions have shaped and changed lives. Your service and dedication to the Sherwood School District has been instrumental in making Sherwood schools some of the best in the state. So I have a plaque to present to Dr. Cordy, and it says, presented to Dr. Heather Cordy in recognition of your outstanding years of service and building a bright Sherwood, bright future for Sherwood.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Noreen, and I was one of the school board members along with my colleagues here who got to have the privilege and honor to hire Heather those years ago. So I'll keep it kind of light, just kind of have one quick story to share with Dr. Cordy or HC. So again, we hired her and in July, as the negotiations happened, I mentioned to her, we found out through the interviews that she played in the marching band at Oregon State University. Go Beavs. So I made the comment, and I don't, who was board, I don't remember who board chair was, but I was on the board, so she would at least listen to me. And she said, I said, well, I am the director of the Robin Hood Festival Marching Band. I said, would you like to play in it? Well, of course. I mean, she said, yes, of course. So she comes to the, you really had no choice. For the rest of your board members, you might want to think about putting that in the contract for the next superintendent to see if they will play in the Sherwood Robin Hood Festival Marching Band. So anyway, first practice was either a Monday or Wednesday. I can't remember. Was that Sherwood Middle School? And I pull up and she was there before anybody else. She was in shorts, tank top, and she's like, I want to play the bass drum. And I said, dang right, you're playing the bass drum. And she marched and she was with us and I hope you had a blast. I had a blast having you in the band and just having our superintendent just only with us for a few weeks. And she was already joining in the community. So Heather, I just appreciate your friendship. Obviously, the community on behalf of everyone, we just appreciate your leadership. Sue, your words were fantastic. And again, we're just indebted to your service. We are grateful that we got you before that other district and so grateful for this community. And just again, I appreciate your friendship and best of luck in your next position.
Hi, I'm Connie Hansen. I also will take credit for hiring Heather Cordy back then. As you recall, she also rode a horse in one of the Robin Hood Festival parades. I think the mayor called her and said, hey, I got an extra horse. Would you get on it? And she said, absolutely, absolutely. I don't have prepared remarks for you, Heather, tonight, only to say it was such an amazing experience to work with you as a board during those years, your service. I learned so much from you. And I appreciate the fact that you built trust in this community that allowed us to ask our taxpayers to raise their taxes twice to build the district that we have here today. And you can't accomplish that unless you have good faith and trust in the people that are serving the district and working in the district. And it's taken decades for that to be built. And Heather's been an amazing stewardship of that trust and faith that the community has in the Sherwood School District. And it's, you can't drive through this community and see all the growth and the buildings that are here and hear the statistics about student health and student success and not understand what a crucial, essential role you were in that. Thank you again. I do consider you a great friend. I wish you all the best in Beaverton. They are so fortunate to have you, and our loss is their gain.
Okay, so Mr. Emmert, I can't put off recognizing retirees anymore. I tried. I got a few more minutes. But if we could recognize the retirees, even though I don't want them to go, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this year we have 23 retirees between our classified and licensed staff. Thirteen were able to join us tonight. And so without further ado, I'll turn this over to Adam Mitchell, who is going to introduce the two high school retirees who were able to attend tonight.
Superintendent Cordy, Chair Hecker, Board of Directors. Come on up. Good. It is my pleasure and I think unique privilege to be able to honor the two most tenured teachers in the Sherwood School District, these two wonderful educators here. You are. First, I'd like to recognize Terrell Smith. T, as he's affectionately known by students, staff, parents, alumni, and everyone in the community, has been a mainstay at Sherwood High School since 1979. I was born in 78. When we think of T, we think of an incredibly innovative educator who is never bound by how things are supposed to be. T's classroom is nothing like anybody else's. Students in his computer science classes are provided with the highest level of individualized education that you will find anywhere. Within each period, T is able to instruct six to seven different courses at one time. It's truly phenomenal. The ideal education for all students is one that is customized to them and what they desire to learn. And that is exactly what T provides to the students at Sherwood High School. Throughout his 43 years of teaching, he has demonstrated the highest standard of what it means to be there for students. In fact, at one point, T was given the opportunity to be the district's director of instructional technology, a job that he performed well for one year. The reason being that he asked after the one year to be moved back to the classroom because he so missed the day-to-day work with students. In addition to his innovative teaching, his T Talks have become legendary. In fact, many students talk very fondly of them even well after they've graduated. Outside of the classroom, T has dedicated a great deal of his time as a member and president of the Oregon Computer Science Teachers Association, interacting with and mentoring so many of Oregon's current computer science teachers. As if all of that were not enough, T has also been an extremely long-tenured athletic coach as well. He began coaching eighth grade baseball in 1979, founded our girls' soccer program in 1981, and then became our head track coach in 1986, a position he still holds. An astonishing number of students have been a part of that program, including multiple Division One athletes. And their success in local, regional, and state competitions has been incredible, including winning the state championship in 2021. Although T is officially retiring, his place at the top of the seniority list for teachers is not going to be given away that easily. T will be returning next year in a halftime role and will continue to coach our track program. Thank you, T, for your service and commitment to the Sherwood High School and the Sherwood School District. Next, I'd like to recognize Jennifer Atwood. Ms. Atwood, as I've come to realize, that's all I can call her because of the the respect and the dedication that she's given to Sherwood High School. I have a hard time only calling, that's all I can really call you. She joined the high school staff in 1983 as a 22-year-old fresh out of college. And she has stayed true to that commitment through teaching drama and language arts to thousands of students, particularly sophomores, over the past 39 years. When she was hired, there were only four language arts teachers on staff. And so she took on many roles to support students in the school. She's been both the advisor of the speech and debate team and the Sherwood High Theater Director. These were roles that she continued for many years, enhancing the lives of everyone that she came in contact with. As I discussed Ms. Atwood's career with her colleagues, one major trend emerged from all of them. The creativity and innovation that she brought to delivering curriculum to the students. One of the absolute most popular language arts classes at Sherwood High School today, and for many years before that, is her film as literature course. Being able to deliver literature through films and have students address the standards through this medium is nothing short of amazing. This is not only a creative way to deliver content, but also a true passion of hers. Ms. Atwood strives every year to watch every nominee for Best Picture on the big screen, as well as watch and critique the Oscars telecast. This provides her with a great connection between the content she's delivering and the real world to share with her students. This summer, Ms. Atwood's grandson Parker will turn one, and she is looking forward to many trips to Florida to spend time with him. Finally, one of her other passions is all things Disney. How exciting will it be when Parker is old enough to go to Disneyland or Disney World with his amazing grandmother? I'm going to try her first name. So thank you, Jennifer, for your outstanding service to our students, our high school, and our school district. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Terrell Smith and Jennifer Atwood, congratulations and thank you so much. And I'd like to introduce Mary Ann Thunderhide for SMS retirees.
So Superintendent Cordy, Chair Hecker, and Board of Directors, it is my privilege tonight to talk about two of our finest employees in the Sherwood School District that are not only colleagues, but dear friends of mine. So that's always makes it a little harder emotional. So I'm going to do my best here. So Jeanette Godfrey and Mike Dyer, can you please come to the podium? So Jeanette Godfrey started in October of 1997 and worked at the district office two and a half years as an HR accountant, accounting assistant. She then became the admin assistant in 2000 at Middleton Elementary. This was Jeanette's first time working at a school, and she loved it. "I love the kids and their stories," she says. In 2012, she transferred over with me to Sherwood Middle School, where she has stayed, thank goodness, the entire time. When Jeanette and I were talking about this transition back in 2012, I remember saying to her, "It's a different pace." She quickly realized I wasn't kidding. She has been at SMS ever since, and her workload is huge, as you can imagine. She's the go-to person for staff, including certified classified, and especially us administrators. She helps staff fill out paperwork on all things. On professional development days and even during staff appreciation weeks, she looks to take on the responsibility of getting the food, the drinks, the setup, and the cleanup. Some of our students visit Jeanette every day, and you can hear them coming down the hallway, "Hi, Mrs. Godfrey, hi, Mrs. Godfrey, hi, Mrs. Godfrey." Adding humor to the end of our year luncheon, Jeanette partners with Allison Kopp to give staff awards. And usually those awards are stories that people were hoping would have been forgotten about. She's also responsible for all things communication, budget, building needs, and more. One of Jeanette's favorite parts of being in the schools is getting to know the kids that come to the office. She has said from kindergarten to eighth grade, "It's fun to get to know some of them and be someone they want to come talk to." "It makes me feel like I have made a difference for them." And you have made a difference for many of them, Jeanette. As a person, Jeanette is approachable, caring, thoughtful, and willing to help others in any way possible. There is rarely a time you walk by her office that she isn't helping someone with something. And oftentimes, it is just offering a listening ear or a wise solution. Lastly, Jeanette works magic behind the scenes and never with the expectation of wanting credit or recognition. What Jeanette has appreciated most are the friends that she has made along the way, from the staff at district office, Middleton, Sherwood Middle School, as well as people from other schools, along with parents and former students. Though it's hard to leave, this is not goodbye for her. She plans to be in Mrs. Strossbaugh's classroom periodically to continue to challenge her at cribbage. Jeanette is looking forward to having time to work on activities she enjoys, like her fused glass, having time to walk with her family on a regular basis, and eventually doing some traveling. Jeanette, you will be missed, but we are excited for you in this next journey. Okay. Mr. Dyer. So, no, I don't want you to read it. I'll put it in my own, my own words. Thank you. So Mike Dyer, 37 years of service and education. Although Mike is our music man, teaching band, jazz band, marching band, choir, and music theater, he has also taught other subjects, including woodshop, computers, fax, reading, study hall, and walking for fitness. In the spring of 1983, Mike started his student teaching at Sherwood High School, ironically, our current middle school. He then was offered his first teaching job in the fall of 1983 as an elementary music and band teacher in Clamath County. He was hired in 1984 at Sheridan School District. After being hired there, a position opened up at SMS, and because Sheridan wouldn't release him, he suggested to Sherwood that they interview his wife, Vicki. And they did. And she worked there for the 84-85 school year until she got pregnant with her first child. And in the fall, Mike took over, the fall of 85 took over, and has been there ever since. His favorite parts of teaching have been when students have lightbulb moments where they realize that they can do much more than they first thought. Seeing his middle school students succeed in high school and beyond. Working with colleagues who care about him as a person. And his work with local union, helping members understand their rights. So some interesting numbers to share with you during Mike's years at Sherwood. Ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. So five superintendents, six SCA bargaining teams, many years in SCA leadership as building rep, a handful of as a vice president and one as president, six high school band directors. six high school band directors. That's my favorite. Nine middle school principals. And we know who his favorite is. So, you know, he told me today. Twenty-four Rose Festival parades, with the last one being this afternoon. And if you have a chance to watch it, it is amazing. They looked and sounded so professional, Mike. Almost 300 concerts and performances, over 4,200 individual students, and over 7,000 round trips commuting to work, which calculates into a half a million miles. Mike figured that out for me. I didn't do that. He has also won a K-103 Teacher of the Week. All I have listed is Mike, but there is so much more to who he is as a person and an educator. It would take several board meetings to truly do him justice, but I'll do my best tonight. One of the things that impresses me most about Mr. Dyer is his ability to take the beginning band students from playing an instrument for the first time to flawless concert performers. This growth often happened in their first year, but for sure after three years. I remember being in my office at LR and listening to the progress kids made on a daily basis. I was lucky enough to get a concert every day, and it just got better and better. The Veterans Day breakfast and dessert were highlights. The pride his students displayed playing the theme songs for each of the military divisions was emotional and heartfelt. Not only did they learn to play the songs, but they shared speeches about the history. For Mr. Dyer, there were many early mornings and late nights preparing for concerts, talent shows, parades, school events, football games, you name it. He provided as many opportunities as possible for his musicians to play for an audience. In a nutshell, Mike worked with students on learning music, but more importantly, on becoming well-rounded citizens, which is who he is at the core. Michael, Mike is Michael. I don't know who that is. Mike is also committed to supporting his colleagues, whether it is with events happening during the school day, individuals needing help with career path information and retirement paperwork, as well as giving some advice when asked, or not asked. Mike is highly respected by his peers, and when you are in a conversation with him, he makes you feel valued. Mike has a reputation for coming up with witty and/or wise comments now known amongst the staff as Dyrisms. These humorous insights will be remembered long after he retires. As I mentioned before, I can't even begin to capture what Mike has contributed to our community, but I will conclude with a quote from part of a letter that was sent to me from a parent. "I probably speak for hundreds and hundreds of parents and grandparents in Sherwood, in the Sherwood School District that have been quietly thankful for the incredible efficiency in which he could throw down one heck of a concert in some very stuffy school concert halls. As a parent, I cherish Mike Dyer for the rich environment he created for my children. In retirement, Mike is looking forward to investing his time with grandkids and helping care for his parents. He is looking forward to watching Casey Crane grow as he makes this program his own. He is also looking forward to getting together with retired colleagues for coffee on some leisurely fall weekday mornings. Mike, congratulations. You are more than a colleague. You are a true friend to so many of us, and you will be missed."
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I'm now going to introduce John Womuth.
We'll get up here, Harold. Good evening, Superintendent Cordy, Chair Hecker, and Board of Directors. I have the distinct honor of recognizing Mr. Hal Shepard for his 42 years in public education, the last 30 of which-
One less.
What, almost, T, almost, almost. The last 30 of which have been in the Sherwood School District. Hal began his teaching career in Pilot Rock, where he taught for four years, teaching high school and middle school band and choir. He then moved to the Corbett School District for eight years, where he was middle school, high school, band, choir, and drama teacher, and then joined Sherwood High School in that same role in 1993. Since 2003, Hal has been at Middleton, although he's been a traveler for a number of years. So, he was at Middleton, and Archer Glen, and Hopkins, and Edie Ridge, and then back to Hopkins, and then back to Edie Ridge. He's a good sport. Hal is passionate about music and the role that the arts play in child development. He finds the talent in every single kid. He is a generous and caring colleague. He's fun. He has a great sense of humor, but he's a goofball. When you walk into the music room, you never know what you might see. He might be dancing, making silly faces most of the time, singing in funny voices, whatever. That's always a surprise. But what you will always see when you enter the music room is kids engaged and happy and smiling and performing and having fun with Mr. Shepard. So, I asked some of our kids what they wanted to share, what to share some words about their music teacher, Mr. Shepard, and what they love about him. And mind you, he is well-loved by our kids. Here's what they said. "He wears that funny thing some days to school. He wears a kilt a couple of times a year. Mr. Shepard is silly. Mr. Shepard smells good." This was from kids, Hal. "Mr. Shepard lets us play xylophones and keyboards and boom whackers. Mr. Shepard gives us stickers. Mr. Shepard can play all the instruments. Mr. Shepard makes me happy." In retirement, Hal is looking forward to a life without required alarm clocks and long commutes. You must know, he has been commuting from back and forth from northeast Portland for a very, very long time. He's also excited to be able to tend evening concerts, which he and his wife Susan love to do during the week. He doesn't have to worry about getting up the next morning and driving all the way out to Sherwood. Retirement will also give Hal time to tend his garden, work around his house, enjoy his woodworking hobby, and of course, as he told me, goof around with music. He's also looking forward to traveling with his wife Susan, who's here tonight, to see his daughter Blair, who currently lives in London. Hal, you have taught thousands of kids over the years, many of whom, no doubt, will name you as a teacher that made a difference in their lives. You are a man of integrity. Your supportive nature, your sense of humor, your positivity have enriched the lives of your many colleagues over the years, myself included. I am proud to call you my friend, and I wish you all the best. Congratulations on your retirement. And at this time, I will introduce Mrs. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Womuth. Good evening, Board of Directors, Chair Hecker, Superintendent Cordy. I could not be more honored tonight to recognize, oh, wrong side, Mrs. Karen Ayers for her 16 years of service to the Sherwood School District. After graduating from what is now Western Oregon University in 1979, Karen was hired at Hayesville Elementary School in Salem. Her first teaching job was a first and second grade blend. Karen later moved to California, where she started a family of her own, four children, that she taught for 13 years. When her youngest was in seventh grade, she went back to the classroom, teaching first grade at a private school in Salem, subbing for a year in New Zealand, and covering a long-term subposition at Middleton Elementary. Karen was then hired to teach kindergarten at Hopkins Elementary and later moved to third grade there before making her final transition to Edie Ridge, now Ridge's Elementary, when it opened in 2009. It has been my absolute pleasure to work with Karen for the last four years. She has been a valuable resource to me from my very first day as a principal at Ridge's, and I am so thankful for her positive attitude and continued support. Karen cares deeply about her students and takes the time to create and foster positive relationships with every one of them. She is an amazing support to her first-grade team, and they have all shared just how much they are going to miss her next year. When visiting with our Ridge's staff, some words they used to describe Karen were thoughtful, kind, knowledgeable, sweet, understanding, caring, loving, and supportive. A few of her students shared some thoughts with me. One noted that Mrs. Ayers is the best actress, and she reads the best stories. The entire class told me that one time, when a bird got into their classroom and was flying around, Mrs. Ayers did the best job out of everyone there at ignoring it. Finally, they shared that Mrs. Ayers always helps us when we need it, and we know that she loves us a lot. As we wrap up the year and reflect on many years of amazing service Karen has given to the Sherwood School District, I know I speak for many when I say that I am thankful that Karen picked our district as her final teaching destination. Karen has made a positive impact on the lives of more students than we could count, and I have no doubt that the legacy of her instruction will continue for many generations. Karen is the kind of teacher that's always willing to help others, and I know that our staff and our district will have a big hole to fill when she leaves. Luckily for us, Karen will be back as a roving substitute teacher for Sherwood Schools for the months of September and October, and we won't officially have to say goodbye until November 1st. And let me tell you that we are definitely going to take advantage of those last two months. Karen has already moved to her new home in Kaiser and has plans to travel and enjoy her seven grandchildren after finishing the fall months with us. Karen is an outstanding educator, and we are lucky to have her as a part of our Ridge's family. We wish her all the best in this next chapter of her life. All right. Ms. Lisa Miller. This is there. That'll be better. Ready for that? It's not very often as a principal that you get the opportunity to present the retiring remarks for one of your former teachers. But tonight, that's exactly what I have the honor of doing. Mrs. Miller was my very own fifth-grade teacher at South Prairie Elementary in Tillamook. And I will never forget the first PD I attended as a teacher in this district when I realized that one of my former teachers worked here. I will also never forget my very first staff meeting as a principal at Ridge's. I shared that Mrs. Miller had been my fifth-grade teacher, and Lisa quickly told the entire staff that to make sure that they were always kind to the kids in their classroom because you never know when one will grow up to be your principal. Lisa graduated from Eastern Oregon State College in 1989. She was then hired by the Tillamook School District, where she taught fifth and sixth-grade students for 10 years. In 2000, Lisa moved to Portland and was hired by the Sherwood School District to teach a four-five blend at Hopkins Elementary. She then taught mostly fifth grade at Hopkins for the next six years. Some of Lisa's favorite memories as a classroom teacher, aside from teaching future principals, of course, included dissecting cow eyes, teaching kids about biology, making rain sticks, performing historical class musicals and Dr. Seuss plays, driving a minibus to support a sixth-grade partnership with an assisted living facility, and painting a homeless shelter as a community service project. In 2006, when a PE position opened at Hopkins, Lisa transitioned into a specialist role for the next three years. She then moved to Edie Ridge, now Ridge's Elementary, as a PE specialist when the building opened in 2009. During the last 13 years, Ridge's has been Lisa's home base. However, she has also provided PE instruction at both Archer Glen and Hopkins during that time as well. Lisa shared that some of her favorite memories as a physical education specialist include teaching after-school clubs, coaching an after-school jump rope team and performing at halftime shows, starting the Hox Challenge and continuing the tradition with the Wolf Challenge for fifth grade, teaching unicycle to third and fifth graders, and celebrating the end of the school year with Super Kids Day, a fun field day event led by our fifth-grade students. This Friday, hopefully not in the rain. Lisa is affectionately known by our students as Coach Kermit, and I know that she will be greatly missed next year. Lisa creates a physical education space that truly allows every student to feel supported and successful. In fact, I had a substitute teacher tell me last week that subbing in Coach Kermit's class, of all the places where she subs, is her very favorite place to be because the routine's in place and the fun that kids always have. Thank you, Mrs. Miller, for making a difference in the lives of students. I have no doubt that you have made a lasting impression on their lives, just like you have on mine. Congratulations and best wishes for everything that is in store for you in your retirement. I will now introduce Sandy Miller from our Transportation Department to honor her retirees.
Good evening, Superintendent Cordy, Chair Hecker, and Board. Thank you for giving me a few minutes this evening to honor Mark Wolfe. He joined Sherwood School District on July 5th of 2013, and which predates my time in Sherwood. And so, I want, the first year that, my first full year here, Mark says, "I'm retiring." And I said-
He finally did.
I said, "I don't know. We're still in negotiations about this. Let's just see what happens for the year." And then, the end of the year came, and he goes, "Okay, but I really like my kids, so maybe one more year." And the next year, he says, "I'm retiring." And this went on for five and a half years. Until-
I turned 70, all right?
And then this year, I knew when Mark came to me and says, "I'm retiring," that Mark was ready to retire. And, and so, we, we sent off Mark, sadly sent him off to do his honey-do list at home. That was a negotiation thing, too. And so, when I was thinking about remarks to say about Mark, a story came to mind about a new driver that came into my office. And he said, "Sandy, do you have a minute?" And I said, "Sure." And he said, "I just wanted to talk to you about Mark." And I said, "Okay." And I'm thinking, "Okay, where's this going?" And he said, "You know, I just want you to know how much I appreciate Mark. As a new driver, he has been such a source of really good information for me." And he told me a story about he was trying to back his bus into the stall at the end of the day, and he was struggling with this, which is oftentimes something that a new driver struggles with, and to the point where he had to circle around the lot and try it again. And he said, "As I was getting the bus back into the stall, I see Mark come in my way, and I'm thinking, 'Oh, no. He's going to give me a hard time.'" And so, he said, "But I opened my door, and Mark came on the bus, and Mark said, 'Don't worry about it. You'll get it. It takes everybody a little bit of time.'" And, and he said, "You don't know how much it means to me as a new driver to have somebody that is a support for me and doesn't put me down for mistakes, but actually lifts me up." And so, that was one of the points I wanted to make about Mark tonight, was how much I appreciated Mark's mentorship to new drivers. And it wasn't just the one. It's repeated over and over again. But the most important point to make about Mark is that Mark was outstanding with his students. Mark understood that how truly important the connection that we all make with kids is. Mark understood that how truly important the connection that we all make with kids is. And he understood that when he opened the door of his bus in the morning and greeted the kids that got on his bus and sent them off to have a good day at school, how important that was. And that's why I won the negotiations for five years. It wasn't me, it was- It wasn't me, it was because he loved the students that he worked with. And, and lastly, I want to talk about what a team player Mark, Mark is and was. I remember time and time again where we'd go, "You know, Mark, we, we need to cover this trip. No, I don't want to do it." "Okay, but Mark, we really need it covered." "No, I don't really want to do it." "Mark, I don't have anybody else. These kids aren't going to get to their field trip." "Okay, fine, I'll do it." And that was Mark for year- That was, that was, that was my five years with Mark, and I truly enjoyed all of our time together. And the negotiations were fun, and I hope that, but they are over, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. And now I'm going to introduce Brady to come up and talk about his retirements.
It is my great honor tonight to honor two Technology Services members who are retiring. Superintendent Cordy, Chair Hecker, members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. So I'll start with Debbie. Debbie Hatfield joined Sherwood School District 40 years ago. First working as a school instructional assistant. She held a variety of positions around the district, including working several schools in the district office. And she joined Technology Services in the early 2000s to manage the phone system. At that time, it was a department of three housed in a since-demolished house called the McNeil House over in an old orchard field. It had shag carpeting and no heat. As the district grew, so did Debbie's responsibilities. She quickly learned how to support a wide variety of hardware and software and played a key role in supporting all types of technology projects and initiatives outside of the scope of her initial position. Debbie always took great pride in getting the details right, phone number sequences that were logical and organized and made sense, up-to-date staff directories, and she recently led, in the last few years, a total revamp of the entire phone system during the capital bond construction. Debbie is remembered very fondly by her coworkers for her positive attitude, her kindness, her dependability, and her sense of humor. The team shared several memories, including when she painted her office floor purple at the McNeil House, Monday morning conversations about lost, her love of flip-flops, and also her dedication to the staff and students of Sherwood. A lot of memories about long evenings in the office and Debbie coming in during Labor Day weekend frequently, just to make sure everything was ready for schools to start the year. The McNeil House may be gone, but Debbie's legacy will live on. She leaves a legacy as a career professional who devoted her working life to Sherwood students during five different decades. She retired at the end of December and has jumped right into her retirement lifestyle. Her plans include spending time with family, visiting Hawaii, and above all else, she said, "Never setting a morning alarm again." Please join me in celebrating Debbie for her record of service to the staff. And now Shane Murray. In 2004, Shane Murray had finished her certification as a licensed phlebotomist when she faced a professional dilemma. Start her career as a phlebotomist or join Sherwood School District as an instructional assistant. Lucky for Sherwood, Shane joined Sherwood School District as an IA at Sherwood Middle School, and then went on to work in many different departments over the next 18 years. After several years at SMS and several roles, she moved to the district office and has been a part of the district office in some form or fashion ever since, including an emergency stint as the administrative assistant to the superintendent. Working in the Technology Department, Shane covered a wide range of duties. Her work has been foundational to the success of various capital bond projects. With the expansion of student devices, Shane's skilled approach to purchasing has allowed us to rapidly expand our student device count to support our one-to-one initiative. Shane is a person of many mottos, many memorable mottos. One of them is never pay for shipping. Throughout the bond, throughout distance learning, throughout last-minute grants coming at us from a variety of sources, her timely work allowed us to be responsive to the emerging needs of students and staff, time and time again. She helped negotiate, she was a master negotiator, and she helped negotiate better terms on a lot of occasions, including a sweet deal recently on some computer monitors that, again, a last-minute need, that she jumped right in. Most importantly with that order, no shipping. Her teammates remember her as charitable, fun, practical, and adaptable. Teammates rave of her ability to always enjoy life, to help those in need, and for bringing the team together for birthdays and celebrations. She remains famous in the department and throughout the district for her homemade salsa, creating team bonding opportunities whenever the salsa jar had enough change for the next batch. In her retirement, Shane will be doing many things. Watching football and golf in her cottage, playing cornhole, visiting family around the US, and feeding apples to the deer on her property. One thing she won't be doing is paying shipping. Please join me in celebrating Shane for her record of service to the staff and students of Sherwood School District. It's now my pleasure to introduce Dr. Josh Fitz, Director of Student Services. Thank you.
Good evening Chair Hecker, Superintendent Dr. Cordy, and Board of Directors. This evening, we honor Jennifer Bennett, who has served as a key member of the Health Services Team for over five years. I want to stress the majority of those years, COVID years, so it should count, more like 40. During her time in that role, she has demonstrated an exceptional work ethic with amazing attention to detail, doing so many things that people probably have no idea happened for all of our students here in the district. Vision screenings, hearing screenings, those COVID messages, answering all kinds of questions. She is there for all of our students. One of her colleagues shared, if she is asked to help with work on a project, her response is always an enthusiastic and joyful "Yes," adding her own style of beauty and grace to everything she does. Now, of course, her amazing work ethic isn't the only thing she is known for. Without fail, she will bake amazing cakes and treats with all the fixing, served on china plates typically, for birthdays, special celebrations, whatever, whatever day comes to mind, because she's all about helping others and making days special. Let's just say she's established a very high bar for office celebrations. In fact, so much so that when we tried to throw her a celebration for her retirement, we couldn't figure out as a group how to put the party together without her. We all wish her well and know that she will enjoy her well-deserved retirement by spending time with her husband, working in the garden, her trip that she has planned down the Rhine River in Germany without her husband. For some reason, she stressed that. As she prepares to leave us, we just want her to know that she has taught those around her many things. As one of her colleagues stated, "Jennifer taught me to see the beauty in the small things." So I hope she knows that when I hear a bird, see a beautiful garden, or get an unexpected hug from someone, I, all of us, we will be thinking of her.
Thank you Chair Hecker, members of the board, Dr. Cordy. I am thrilled to get to honor one of my closest colleagues over the last five years, Phil Johansson. Phil started the Sherwood eight years ago and has led our budget and fiscal work since then. Over that time, he has really developed an understanding of public education financing. And one thing I really appreciate about working side-by-side with Phil is that he could listen to conversations of others and develop the needed spreadsheets and presentations to give you the answers you needed. And if you've watched any of our budget presentations over the last number of years, you'll really know what I mean. His ability to put together a spreadsheet is top-notch, frankly. Looking back on his career, I can say that Phil has had a variety of roles throughout his career, but I know from talking with him that he really enjoyed K-12 public education and his time in it. And I want to take just a moment and add one more comment about Phil the person, not the coworker. Many of you know just how nice Phil is. And I have one story that really portrays that characteristic of him. At the old district office, parking was limited, to say the least, and we had one spot that every single time it rained, no matter how little or how much, that spot flooded. And that was a spot that Phil took, and I finally found out why. He took it because he didn't want his colleagues, his coworkers, his friends, to have to deal with that huge puddle. And so he did, day in and day out, for all the years we were there, at least my time. I think that consideration that he showed is the core of who Phil Johansson is, and for that reason, he will be sorely missed here at the district office. And Phil, thank you for your time, thank you for your friendship, thank you for everything you've done for this school district. Good luck and enjoy your retirement. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Cordy for a special recognition.
So Sue, this evening, we have the opportunity to honor you, our current board chair, a loyal servant to the community, selflessly serving as a board member for the last 15 years. So I'm going to tell a little story, and it's interesting, because you told your version of the story just a few minutes ago. They match up, which is, which is a good thing. It was at about this time of year, 12 years ago, that I had the opportunity to meet Sue. I was serving as assistant superintendent in the Redmond School District and was approached about applying for the superintendent position in Sherwood. At that time, I didn't know much about the district, but I started diving into all of the research. What was very clear very soon in that process was that the staff was clearly a group of dedicated professionals who care so much about the students in their care, and that the board was very high-functioning and professional, things that a superintendent candidate looks for when considering a new school district. It was a Saturday afternoon in mid-May in an upstairs room in Old Town, because there weren't any meeting rooms in our old district office. I still don't really know where we were, but I, I just know that I was sent upstairs. That's where, that's where the interview happened. I remember where Sue was sitting. My nerves and my excitement absolutely could have gotten the best of me. But her reassuring smile and occasional head nod she's doing right now helped me to know that I was among friends. By the way, Sue, you need to know also that my team, when they're up here presenting, that is something that they have noticed and affirmed about you over the time, the engagement, the affirmation that you give them and the support just through how you sit there and interact with them, so it's not a small thing. I learned later that day that I was a finalist, or I guess the finalist, for the job, and that Sue and Connie Hansen, another board member at the time, would be visiting Redmond on Monday, so just two days from then, to do a site visit. So first, I may have allegedly had to Google what to expect in a site visit, because I had no idea, but I knew that it was very important. And so I got really busy preparing for, for that next Monday morning. Connie and Sue arrived early that Monday, and little did I know then that that would be the beginning of a long and prosperous work relationship, and more importantly, a friendship. In preparation for tonight and having the opportunity to think about how to honor Sue in the way that she deserves, I asked several staff members to share with me what they think of when they think of Chair Hecker. Here are just some of the many touching and thoughtful responses. Sue is deeply committed to Sherwood students and to Sherwood staff. She cares about all the students in the district, even when it may not have been the best decision for her own children. Committed to making sure Sherwood has the schools and facilities it needs by helping to lead two major bond efforts. Sue has a heart for kids. She's a cheerleader for all of us. Supportive and trusting of our administrative team. There were memories of her and Joe hosting celebration dinners with administrators at their home. There were lots of examples of appreciation about her laughter and her amazing sense of humor. It was noted that she has never had a personal agenda in her service on the board and has truly acted in service and made decisions in service to the community and the students in our care. This, the next couple of items were recurring. She takes the time to compose handwritten notes and send them to staff all over the district. And then that was followed up with, and the timing of those personal notes is impeccable. And just when you look out at the audience right now and you see the heads nodding, Sue, I hope you know what that means to each and every one of us. The timing is impeccable and often linked to something specific that has occurred or something that had been said. You care so much about us, and when I'm in administrators' offices and the note card from Sue Hecker is adorning their desk, I know what that means to them. I know what it means to me. Sue, these are just a few of the many kind and thoughtful sentiments that our admin team and staff shared about you. The list is long and so deserving. Before I introduce the next speaker, I want you to know what you mean to me. The laughter, the tears, the joy, the struggles we've endured together over the years will never be forgotten. Thank you for trusting in that rookie superintendent all those years ago and for being our biggest champion today. Joe and your family have sacrificed so much as you have served this district. To you and to your family, I thank you. Now, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dan Jamison, who served as superintendent of the Sherwood School District from 2005 to 2010.
Sue, before I begin, and Dr. Cordy, thank you, thank you Heather. I just need to make a comment for all of you. The feeling of reciprocated love- The feeling of reciprocated love is so palpable in this room tonight. And that is a reflection of great people, a great district, and a great community. You are all affirmed for that. So thank you and good evening, Madam Chair, for the last time. Sue, we have many reasons to celebrate your leadership tonight, and I'd like to focus my comments on some of your earlier efforts, even before you were a board member, starting when you and I first met back in the fall of 2005. Many in the audience may not know that was a time of make or break for our community. Sherwood was experiencing unprecedented growth with enrollment increasing between 2 and 300 students a year. We should have been building a new school every two years. Back in 2005, our school buildings were designed to accommodate about 2,700 students. And that fall, we opened with 3,800 in September. Placement at a bit of 750 students and 30 modular classrooms stretched us to the limit. The additional modulators and placing them was out of the question because we had already encroached on our playgrounds and also on our playing fields. We even had kinder classes in this building, meeting on the stage. In simple terms, we were out of space and we were out of time. With this larger context, with so much at stake, you stepped into this void. It is not surprising that you were the community leader we looked to, to lead our bond effort. Those months were a crucible of hard work, community outreach, and relentless schedules of meetings, meetings with PTCs, meetings with business leaders, meetings with the Moms Club, meetings with service organizations, faith leaders, sports groups, arts advocates, and more. Throughout this daunting time, you demonstrated the traits that we have come to appreciate and love about you. Great listening skills, steady competence, credibility, thoroughness, a relentless commitment to serve all kids, and most importantly, the earned trust of our community. It's not coincidence that we passed that bond with over 60% approval. And further, after that bond was passed, with your continued guidance, input and oversight, the district was able to deliver all projects under budget and ahead of schedule, which was pretty remarkable at that time. Now, soon after, when former board member Kevin Henry suddenly transferred to Arizona, the remaining board members needed very little reflection or discussion in order to select you to feel, fill that vital role. Now, in baseball terms, which I know you and one other guest speaker here tonight will appreciate, when you're in the bottom of the ninth and you need a pinch hitter, and you have Ken Griffey Jr. in the dugout, he grabs the bat. Well, Sue, you not only grabbed the bat, you went to bat for our kids and our community, and as they say, you hit it out of the yard. Sue, from a more serious perspective, we live in a world that is hyper obsessed with instant fame, notoriety, clicks, likes, episodic leaders who rise fast and then burn out just as quickly. The great irony, the great irony is that our real leaders, our heroes, are right here amongst us in our communities, quietly serving, strengthening the fabric of everything that we hold dear. So Sue, I'd like to say just very simply, we acknowledge you tonight by saying, in your steady commitment to do what is good and right by all kids in Sherwood, you have achieved greatness in our eyes, and we as a community, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh.
We're not done, Sue. Thank you so much, Dan. Now, I have the pleasure of introducing Ms. Connie Hansen, Sherwood School District Board Member from 2005 to 2017, serving alongside Sue for 10 years. Connie?
First of all, I just want to say, you know, my boy was in the Sherwood School District in 1990. There are many of you in this room that educated my children, and thank you so much for that. Made me experience K-12, birthed in Sherwood. And a lot of their success and the men that they've grown to be is because of the time and talent.
Okay, Sue. I'm so thrilled to be here to honor you tonight. The 10 years I spent with you on the Board of Directors was one of the great privileges of my volunteer career. You bring a level of service and commitment and compassion and servant leadership to your role on the board. We didn't always agree. There were times we had to wrestle with some really difficult issues, and we didn't always see eye to eye. But you, we both approached it with an open mind and an open heart and the assumption that we were both coming to build consensus and to develop the best policy or role, whatever practice that we could that would serve all the kids in this district. I have funny memories from that first bond campaign. We both thought we might get off the board before they had to do a second bond campaign. But what was so remarkable, remarkable about you in 2006, 2005, 2006, was your ability to build relationships in this community. You have reached out across the community over and over and over again, and you make it a commit, you're committed to maintaining working relationships. We've been through really difficult boundary adjustments, and you were always so gracious and thoughtful and kind to everyone that came to offer their input into the meetings. And that has served this community so well in your tenure in the board. Thank you so much. I appreciate everything that you've always done. You've been a great friend, and I look forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you, Connie. And now, Mr. Kevin Noreen, Sherwood School District Board Member from 2003 to November 2012, serving alongside Sue for five years.
Good evening. I also want to just echo Connie's comments on this room, and I tell you, there are not many times when I've thought, gosh, I wish I was still on that school board. But tonight, I hope you're soaking this up, Sue, because this is an amazing, amazing group of people that we've been able to recognize and celebrate in this community, along with this amazing woman right here. So congratulations to you and just soak it up, and all the cool kids write their speeches on the phone, so I'm gonna try it out. All right. So Sue, I also would like to thank you for your amazing service to this community, the parents, the students, and staff. Sue, as, as Dan and Connie mentioned, and Dr. Cordy, she's always been a champion for kids, running that bond campaign and then joining us on the board. I can remember going to the first summer conference with Sue for OSBA after she was elected. We, you know, she shared some insights and some thoughts about what her takeaways were during that conference. And from that point forward, she exemplified dedication and commitment as a school board member, always doing what's best for kids and working collaboratively with her fellow board members, superintendent, school administration, and unions. Thank you, Sue, for your dedication to the schools and the students of this community. I always appreciated your perspective, commitment, and focus on what was best for kids. And serving with you as a fellow board member, I always appreciated the conversations we had and the support you gave me while I was board chair. No one can take away those thousands of hours you have given to this community or the memories and friendships you have created in the time on the board. I hope you look back at all of that and soak it up. All of those experiences contributed to who you are today as a mom, a businesswoman, and a leader in our community. I'm grateful for the time we worked together on the board, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to call Director Jessica Adamson to the podium. Jessica was appointed to Kevin's vacated position in November of 2012. She and Sue have served together for 10 years. Jessica?
Yeah, it's real hard. Real hard to keep this together for a lot of reasons, but Sue, you and I met during that 2006 bond. I got invited. We, we all knew Dan. Dan said, hey, you gotta get to know this person, Sue Hecker. She's amazing. And so we got to know each other, and you invited me over to your house. And I was like, huh, this is really kind of strange directions, right? It would have been faster for me to go climb over the fence in our backyard. We have been neighbors for a very long time. And that fence, they say fences, good fences make good neighbors. Good fences also help to pass school bonds, it turns out, because that fence has been the source of where we've passed documents back and forth, made sure that we had what we needed and built, not only these great school bonds that have made a difference for each and every one of our kids and our staff and made it possible for us to build a truly excellent education program. But that fence built a friendship that I'm so grateful for. You know, Harry Truman, President Truman was quoted as saying, you know, it's amazing what you can accomplish if you don't care who gets the credit. And I can't think of anybody that that embodies more than you, Sue Hecker. People in this community don't know the unending efforts that you make on behalf of all of our kids, how you advocate for kids, no matter what program it is, no matter who it is, to make sure that they have opportunities, that they are celebrated, that this community views our schools with all the passion and joy that they should. That the disagreements, the pettiness, the, the whatever it is flows away and stays with you because you have always cared more about the outcome than the credit. You could write quite a book. You've seen a lot in your years on the school board, and it'd be, it'd be a page turner, to be sure. But I don't expect that you ever will, because that's not who you are. That's not who you've ever been. You've always been about, how do we do what's next so that we can build a district that provides truly opportunities for us all, for our kids. You were the first one to pick up the phone and encourage the city to open its doors so that the community could watch some kids in Dayton, Ohio, compete for a world championship. You were there advocating for kids at all levels. And when you and I first met, it was about making sure that kids could walk through a middle school without their arms up in the air because they started out in the class, out of their classroom in the wrong way so they could sit down at a table for lunch. Every building in this district has changed. We've adopted new curriculum, new programs, all of that. And indelible in all of that are your fingerprints, Sue Hecker. Your work in this community will live on forever. Your impact on students will live on forever. And they may never know it, but I hope that everyone here tonight knows this community, this educational program, would not be what it is without Sue Hecker. We are grateful and fortunate. We have a plaque that we hope you will, you will hang on to, to know what you are to all of us. There's some simple words, but I hope you know you have changed lives forever, including mine, and I am so grateful for you. So we want to present a plaque to Sue Hecker in honor of your 15 years of service and commitment to the students, staff, and families of the Sherwood School District. Can we all please stand and celebrate Sue Hecker?
Thank you. My gosh, you guys can sit down. Way too much, but thank you all so very much. And we're gonna do some board reports, and then we'll take a 10-minute break. But I'd like to take the break after we do reports, just so we can kind of wrap up this portion. I think there are folks that probably want to share a couple other words. So with that, we'll move on to reports. And we'll start with Superintendent Cordy. I know, yeah.
Good evening. So several years ago, I got some feedback from a board member related to my, my superintendent reports. And it was amazing feedback, and I never veered away from what he asked me to do, which was, Heather, it would be great if your board reports could be less scripted, if you could not read them and just truly just speak about, about what it is that you want to share about. And from that word, from that moment on, I didn't have my notes written up. And then he teased me often, and this was Pat Allen, teased me often for then how, what an extreme change I made with my hot pink marker, just jotting down a few notes and, and using that in my, in my, my superintendent report. But tonight, I, I needed to write it down because I needed to make sure that I wasn't going to miss some thoughts. So bear with me, and Pat, if you're listening, just please file that away. So at, as the school year quickly comes to an end, we find ourselves, as we do every year, juggling the closing activities of one with planning and preparations for the next. We have been busy engaging in many hiring processes for open classified, certified, and administrative positions. We recently conducted interviews for our Nutrition Services Director and our new high school associate principal, and we expect to be making those exciting announcements soon. Hiring is likely the most important thing we do. And in addition to welcoming all of the new members to our administrative team, I want to also congratulate those who are moving on and up to other positions and challenges in their careers. A couple of weeks ago, I held my last superintendent student advisory team meeting of the year, and I was reminded once again of the importance of student voice. The students who served on that advisory team are thoughtful, they're inclusive, caring, and they take their jobs very seriously as they represent their peers and advise me on various issues over the years. Graduation this Friday will be the second ceremony in our new stadium, but the first following more of our pre-pandemic approach to that poignant event. The same is true for eighth grade promotion the next week. The end of a school year provides a very natural transition point to reflect on the past, to learn from what took place and what we experienced in hopes that it will help us in hopes that it will help us to inform our actions in the future. For me, the conclusion of this year marks more than just the end of a school year. It also marks the end of a huge part of my career and my life. As I leave Sherwood School District after 12 years, there are many points at which I find myself reflecting on our shared experiences. Here are some of my biggest takeaways. Taking the time to learn other stories means something. It helps people feel seen and feel valued. Sharing life's highs and lows with the people you work with contributes to the relationships that develop. Holding space for people in those moments means everything. Sherwood staff model these principles every day. When all else seems to fail, we should laugh because it really helps. In the absence of communication, people will make up their own stories. The more that people can remove themselves from the tethers of social media, the more we will be able to have honest, caring conversations, discussions, and debates. Staying true to one's values versus being driven by events is what will help us all be true to ourselves and what we believe in. And lastly, my greatest reflections are twofold. The Sherwood staff are 500-plus individuals who come together as one, as a team, and do amazing things for our students and their families. And last, but certainly not least, the Sherwood administrative team is second to none. It has been an honor and my privilege to serve alongside this group of caring professionals and to call them my friends. Serving in Sherwood has been the highlight of my career, and I will always be grateful for the time I spent here and the relationships that have developed. Thank you.
Dr. Nyangaral?
Well, it's been almost an entire year, and it's been really incredible. I've had a lot of great experiences and met a lot of amazing people. First and foremost, I would like to say thank you to all the teachers and staff that, you know, stuck through it all year. I know it was a tough year. It was a grueling year for you. And just thank you for sticking it out for our kids and our community. Truly, thank you. I'm proud of what we were able to accomplish this year as a board. I'm glad we were able to do one small thing for you, you know, the wellness days that we were able to approve. I hope that helped in some small way. I'm very proud that we were able to keep the schools open this year. That was a big deal. And I thank you, Heather, and team for doing everything within your power to make that a reality. That was huge. I'm glad we voted to get rid of the masks as soon as the mandates were over. I think a heavy weight was lifted when we were able to do that. I'm glad we voted against, you know, the requirement for vaccines for the kids. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Heather for all of her help getting me onboarded and getting me up to speed with things. There were times when I had questions, and, you know, she would send me these emails, and it was just so much information and so helpful. I really appreciate that you, deep down, have the heart of a teacher. I could tell through our communications. I want to say thank you to the community for their support. This first year, it's just been incredible, the amount of support and love that has come from the community. I don't know if I would have been able to do it without you. Thank you. And finally, I just want to say good luck, and thank you, Sue, for everything you've done for me as well, sharing your knowledge and wisdom. It made it a lot less stressful, and we were just lucky to have somebody like you to help move us along. So thank you.
Director Adamson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to talk about three different things. One, I want to acknowledge that this evening, buried in our consent agenda, we took an important step in approving both Short Education Association and OSEA contracts tonight. And I had the opportunity over the last month or so to be among those that sat at those tables and worked on those. And I just want to say to our teachers and to our classified staff, thank you. Thank you for what you brought to the table. Thank you for the relationships that we have. Thank you for working with us to make sure that we can attract and retain the most outstanding staff in the state. By far, no competitor to that. And I just want to say thank you for that opportunity. Really proud to take a vote in favor of that tonight and just really proud of the work that we do together to strike a bargain that both honors the work that our staff do and is sustainable so that we have the ability to sustain program over time. And so just very proud of that. To the retiring teachers, man, we're going to miss you. I see faces here tonight that have educated my children, my three, have been super patient with them. Some more than others, like some needing more patience than others on my children's part. Less on, y'all have been great, and I'm grateful for all of you. I wish you the absolute best in your retirement. You've made our district great, and you've changed lives, including my own children's lives. And I'm having a real hard time not getting emotional about that. Leading up to the last part where I'm going to get real emotional, Heather. On Friday, when those kids are crossing the stage, those kids were first graders when you first came through. Including my kid. And he was a lot. Thank you, Mr. Woolworth. A lot. So much. There are not enough words. I am grateful for you. Excellence doesn't happen by accident. Excellence in a district with this level of achievement, with the kind of programs that speak to each and every child and to finding a way to help them shine, no matter what that particular thing is, that doesn't happen by accident. It's designed, and it's thoughtful, and it's planned. It's hours of writing and thinking and being thoughtful, and then putting those plans into action. And you did that for 12 years. And look at what's happened. This district is excellent, and that doesn't happen by accident. It takes great leaders sustaining that work over time, relentlessly investing in what do we need to do to help make sure that no kid is left behind and that everyone has a great experience here, no matter what that experience looks like, day in and day out, and setting that expectation with your team and continuing to move it forward. I'm grateful for you. And Beaverton, they are lucky. They are ridiculously lucky. I'm a little bitter about it. And because we're Sherwood, we're pretty competitive. We want the best. But I wish you well in your future. I know you'll always have a home here. You've built an amazing thing. Our goal is to keep it going. Thank you, Heather.
Director Thorne?
I'd like to use my board time tonight to acknowledge a few things. First, to our graduating seniors, what an exciting time for you, a time filled with anticipation as you move along on this amazing journey of life. Some of you are off to college. Some of you are off to the military. Some of you have a job lined up, and some of you aren't quite sure yet what is next for you, and that's okay. What's important to acknowledge is that behind you are wonderful memories, and before you are your dreams. Around you are those who love you, and within you is all you need. Go confidently in the direction of your dreams. Live the life that you imagined, and believe in your heart that you're capable of achieving anything that you put your mind to. Good luck to all of you, and God bless. To the teachers and the staff of the Sherwood School District, it's definitely been a hard year. You're almost there. I can't imagine the joy that you must feel when you see how much you've made a difference in students' lives. Thank you for guiding these students. Thank you for being there for them and showing them the way. Thank you for having patience, especially when it was hard to know what to do or what to say. Thank you for supporting and encouraging our students. You truly are an inspiration, and thank you. Thank you, Sue, for all of your years of service to the district and for your many contributions to the district and to the board and to giving me many opportunities to learn. And Heather, thank you to you as well. I wish you the best of luck on your new endeavor.
Thank you. Director Hopkins?
I think I maybe should start writing notes for my board reports. I never write anything down, but first of all, it has been a year that has felt slow and a year that has felt fast all at the same time. It has been really bumpy for those of us up here, kind of learning the way all year long. And I want to thank the community for giving us some grace and understanding that it's a big job to fill up here, and it's not common sense, and it's definitely nothing I learned prior to being on this board, so I'm really appreciative of that. Tonight, it was really exciting to see all the people that will be promoted to new roles, but it's also really sad to see all the people moving on from our district. I'm so happy that you guys get to retire, but I'm sad for our students because you've made such a huge impact on their lives. And we all know that amazing teachers aren't just found every day, and so you will be greatly missed in our district. Sue, I don't want to get emotional, but you have been such a great leader for us. And I know that I had the opportunity to work with you prior to the board, and I have always appreciated your ability to listen and guide and be kind and gentle, even when we don't agree. So we will miss you greatly, but you've earned your time to step down. I know you'll be running out of here happily, but we will miss you. Yeah, sorry. And Dr. Cordy, we will miss you as well. I was hoping, obviously, to get to learn from you for more than a year, but you have been a tremendous leader for us as well. And I know my kids have been impacted by so many amazing things that you have done in our district, and we will miss you, but I hope that you enjoy your next position, and I wish you a ton of success.
Thank you. My goodness. Okay. So first and foremost, you know, as I sit here, I obviously thank you all for your service. This is one of my favorite meetings, but it's always awful to see all the retirees. But as I sit here and think back and reflect on, you know, you teaching my children and getting to know many of you on various committees over the years, it just makes me smile, and I think of the thousands and thousands of hours you've put in and lives you've changed, and that's incredible. And on that note, I would like to invite each and every one of you back. You do not have to leave. It's going to be hard to go cold turkey, so we have substitute positions available. I know I won't be the one involved in that, but, you know, I'm just saying, a plug for the district. Do not, you know, you are always welcome. But in a serious note, thank you all for your service and for this year. And I'd actually publicly, I didn't have this in my comments, but I kind of blame Connie Hansen for me being up here because I had a kindergartner, and she was doing her thing at Middleton. And I don't know that I had a choice to go to that first budget committee meeting I ever went to. I had no intention of speaking. I'm pretty sure I was wearing sweats. And I did. I think I made a comment about, well, you know, the kindergartners can't read, you know, we've got other problems. That was kind of the end of the story, so thank you for that. But, yeah. But I do have to say a couple of things. It's hard to sum up 15 years. But really, the journey started long before that. My mom introduced me to books and raised me to believe I could do anything, and that education was the door to opportunity. I witnessed my mom's teaching career as a special education teacher and her belief that every child can learn. So it's really no wonder I ended up volunteering for schools. What I've learned over the years in Sherwood is that parents care. They are passionate about their beliefs and want the best for their children. And if you don't believe me, try to change boundaries and move their child to a different school, and you will see firsthand the love they have for the teachers and whatever current school their child attends. This is clearly a community that supports and values education. It's the relationships, though, that are built over the years that I cherish. It's been my privilege to participate on so many committees, both inside and outside the district. What a pleasure to get to know so many incredible leaders. I am truly grateful. What an honor to work alongside such top-notch educational professionals. Thank you. I'm optimistic for the next chapter of the district and the board. I know you will continue the strong legacy of education in Sherwood. And to my fellow board members, please know I'm only a phone call away, but I promise not to call you. On a serious note, my motivation to volunteer in the Sherwood School District was simply to do everything I could to help students succeed and ultimately look my own children in the eye, knowing I did my best. I sincerely hope that is the case, and perhaps I and we together were able to make that difference. Lastly, I want to thank my family, Joe, Rich, Sarah, and Nick. You are my inspiration and ultimately the ones who sacrificed the most. So thank you. Okay, and that's enough of all the tears. So we're done. Okay, so with that, let's, whoops, I guess we've got a couple more parts. I'm sorry. So OSEA. Oh, Nancy, awesome. Okay, the podium is yours.
There'd be another one with you.
Yeah, no, I said we're done. We're done with.
Good evening, Chair Hecker, Board Directors, Dr. Cordy. I'm pleased to be here tonight. Kyler is currently attending his niece's graduation, so I'll try to be brief. It's been long already. But I first want to start by echoing many of the previous words and congratulations to our retirees. As you heard earlier, we are losing four our foremost senior teachers, Terrell, Jennifer, Mike, and Hal. Collectively, they have 149 years here in Sherwood. It's pretty amazing. Over the past 20 years, I've been lucky enough to work with a large number of all of our retirees. And I can say without hesitation that our students and our district as a whole are so much better because of all that they have brought to the profession and given to this district and community. Kyler and I wanted to talk just a minute about the elementary conferences held mid-May. We heard from all of our building reps and colleagues that they were a huge success. We offered that hybrid model, the in-person and Zoom, and most of our parents did choose the in-person. For many of our families, this was the very first time that they had been back in the building in a very long time, for our youngest ones, maybe the first time, and in the classroom. So it was really wonderful to have that extra buzz in the building. Our spring conferences, as you know, are generally, or often, I should say, student-led. It gives the children the opportunity for them to showcase the work that they've done and show the progress that they've made throughout the year. Parents seemed really happy. The children were so proud. And the teachers, while exhausted, were so, so pleased to have it back to feeling sort of the way it should be, right? Director Hecker. Many of the words have already been said during Spotlight On, but I'd be remiss if I didn't. but I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly thank you on behalf of all of Sherwood Education Association for the tireless hours that you have given to the district and the community. From the time I first met you, when Rich entered school 20 years ago, to now, you have just done so much. You have truly, through the work, left a legacy. And we are forever grateful. Superintendent Cordy. Well, I feel like we've gone full circle. From the first board meeting that you attended 12 years ago to tonight. Thank you. Thank you for your ever-present partnership. Over the last 12 years, you have led us through so many challenges and changes, as have been expressed earlier tonight. As an association leader for all of those years, I am beyond grateful for our strong, healthy working relationship, for our friendship, really. You and I have had some really hard conversations over the years. We didn't always agree on everything, the issues or the outcomes, but we always worked together to find solutions that would move us forward. I think it's because our partnership has been based on respect, on trust, on integrity, high expectations, and shared goals for our students and our staff. There's a reason that in all these years, we haven't had grievances and why we have teachers like T and Jen and Mike and Hal, who've been teaching in Sherwood for so many years. It's because of the relationships and the focus on relationships and the culture that you have built. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I thank you and I treasure you. I know Beaverton is so lucky to get you. Directors, in closing, as we enter a new chapter in this district with an interim superintendent, an eventual permanent superintendent, one of our greatest hopes is that you will encourage, no, actually expect that the new superintendent develops those same strong working relationships that Dr. Cordy has developed, not only for the administration, but for the associations and the staff as well. The collaboration and partnership, the support of innovative and new ideas is one of the key factors that have resulted in significant student success for students here in Sherwood. Thank you.
Thank you. OSCE, Mr. Mize.
Good evening, Board Chair Hecker, Board of Directors, and Superintendent Cordy. On behalf of the OSCE Board and its members, I would like to thank you for approval of the 2022-2025 OSCE bargaining agreement. We have received a great deal of positive feedback. We also received feedback from one of our longest members, who said this is one of the best contracts and proposals they have ever seen in the last 27 years of being in the district. And we look for, OSCE looks forward to an ongoing collaboration with the district and board to better serve the students and community of Sherwood. We would also like to thank Director Hecker for your service and for so many years. I had on here how many years you've been here, but obviously I did the math wrong, so you have been here a long time. So we have flowers for you. Thank you so much for all you've done for our kids, my kids especially. Yeah, so for many years, personally with construction and just all the building things, especially if many of you have not been here long enough to know what the McNeil House was. And thank you so much for the district office. And we also would like to thank Superintendent Dr. Cordy. It has been a great pleasure working with you for these years. And I know that we don't get to see each other a lot in this building, and we just pass once in a while, but it's been awesome. And I just want to say, kind of lighten the mood and go off Kevin Norine's story. So I was also a band member in the Ralantid Marching Band. And I remember when Kevin told me, and I think he had just started, and he goes, oh, Heather's going to be in the band. I'm like, really? And then he told me she was going to play the drums. I'm like, she knows how to do that? And I expected you to walk the whole way in your high heels, but you didn't. So thank you so much for the memories.
But Brad, do you remember how you helped me at one of the parades? Because it wasn't the high heels, but it was a new pair of really cute tennis shoes that I wanted to wear with the marching outfit. And do you remember the blisters?
Yes.
Before the parade even started, and you were so sweet. You and I were commiserating. You had your trumpet, and you went to your rig and your vehicle. I'm from Eastern Oregon. It's your rig. And you got me Band-Aids, and you hustled back so we wouldn't get in trouble by Kevin, and I will never forget that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, you guys are so sweet.
Okay. So thank you for the reports, and we're going to go ahead and just take a quick five-minute break. So for those of you that don't want to stay for, you know, the rest of the meeting, you are welcome to go. Okay, thank you for letting us take just a quick break, and we're going to move on to public comment. These are public comments that pertain to the agenda. So we've just got a couple comments this evening. I'd like to invite Jenica Smith to the podium. The mic is yours for the next three minutes, and I'm sorry we couldn't do that a little better and connect you to the rest.
I take after my dad. It might be hard for me to get away from the mic.
Okay, just kidding. There you go.
Is Kevin still here? No, he left. I was going to say, I'm using my phone for my notes, too. All right. My name is Jenica Smith, Superintendent Cordy, Board Chair Hecker, and the board. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. It's not very often that someone gets to teach in the same school district as their dad. Wait, let me rephrase that. It's not very often that a dad is lucky enough to teach in the same district as his daughter. All kidding aside, for those of you who haven't had the opportunity to meet or get to know my dad, Terrell Smith, his passion for helping others is extremely evident. You would find him teaching computer science at the high school, out on the track announcing track meets, and supporting certified staff as the union president. His career actually started right here in this building 43 years ago. Adam, you stole my thunder. That's right, I said 43. So let's go way back to the year 1979. Sherwood's traffic Sherwood's traffic control consisted of one stoplight, a population of about 2,300 people, and fields of cows instead of rows of houses. Dad had decided to pass on working in vacuum and car sales and try his hand at teaching. As an athlete who will still give you a run for your money on the basketball court, it seemed fitting for him to start with teaching PE. After a couple of years at Hopkins and a handful more at Sherwood Middle School, he eventually made his way to the high school where he taught for the rest of his career. When he wasn't recruiting literally every student he saw in the hallways for the track team, he, he spent the majority of his time teaching computer science. And most importantly, he was always finding ways to empower all students. Whether it was struggling students, students struggling socially or emotionally, students with special needs, or students who just needed to find their niche. He always came home with stories of the kids that, you know, came back to him and said, hey, you made a difference for me and I found my way because of you. That wasn't a part of the speech, but I still have a minute, okay. And so they all had a home and his classroom were on the track. And what they didn't know is whether they liked it or not, before TEDx was a thing, my dad would give a Monday motion, Monday motivation or a T-talk every week. Monday motivation was a big deal for my dad. I need to practice my Monday motivation speech, he'd say. And my brother and I would listen as he would tell a captivating story, ending with a meaningful life lesson. I remember listening to them countless times as a child, sitting on the front porch, watching sunsets, car ride conversations, family trips, and at the dinner table. He knew he had a captive audience. His stories became a little more dramatic each time. And my guess is that he was hoping these life lessons would rub off on my brother and me in the process. The verdicts, the verdict, you ruined my punchline. The verdict's still out on that. Regardless, I would like to acknowledge my dad, along with all the other retirees that are maybe still here or they left. And because a lot of them coached, like, helped me in my career. They coached basketball, coached me basketball. They, Jeanette helped me and saved me a million times as the secretary at Middleton. And so I just want to acknowledge all of you and your commitment to making a difference for kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have an online comment, I believe, Mr. Emmett.
Stacy Robertson. My comments are in regard to the proposed elementary social studies materials adoption using Inquire Ed, a relatively new program. While most of it may sound good on the surface, there's too much emphasis placed on the cultural responsive teaching practices while ignoring or minimizing important facts and major events in history. I listened to a recorded conversation between the founder of Inquire Ed and the VP of Curriculum and Instruction, Prinuzella, where they stated, for example, that students don't need to know about the French Revolution. They need to understand casualty. Well, how about both? The French Revolution ranks right up there with the American Revolution in shaping, the shaping of our modern world. In the video, they continued, "With cultural responsive teaching flows from an understanding of who our students are in their fullness, including cultural, racial, ethnic, sexual identities. It means confronting and changing practices that may have served the historical majority well, but have been damaging to others. The system of K-12 education in the US was designed to propagate and perpetuate a white normative vision of success. It doesn't work for non-white students' academic pursuits." They go on to say that "Our teachers have to do some unlearning of ways they were taught in order to serve all students. So basically, a teacher can and should respond differently to the class based on their race. So what does a teacher do with a roomful of white students? How would they teach them? Teach only content that whites could understand in relation to their own culture, whatever a white culture means? That sounds absurd, doesn't it? So while Inquire Ed and other tech ed companies' goals are firmly on equity, shifting standards, curating content to fit the trend of cultural responsiveness where everything goes through the lens of race, and centering student identities and racial makeup of the classroom is emphasized, academics is obviously not the primary focus. Instead, it's the mantra of transformative learning, social engineering above all. Changing society is what really matters. We've gone to the extreme with this idea of being culturally responsive and it's the only way kids can really learn something. That's a lie. We have to remember who is telling us this lie. Tech ed companies that want to sell you their programs responding to the captured ideologies of ODE. We need to get back to a reasonable balance."
Thank you. So we'll move on to the information and discussion portion of the agenda and we're going to hear about K-5 Elementary Social Science from Miss Carol Larson Hay and McCusker. And if I, just in case I forget, once you have presented, you, you're welcome to go ahead and take off. It's, it's already late, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cordy, board members and Board Chair Hecker. And to start, I want to share a little bit about what social science is. Social science is many things, but at its core, it is the drive to understand how the social world operates and ultimately why people do the things they do. In elementary school, that means that we ask students to explore the many ways that people have lived their lives here in Sherwood and in other places, as well as both past and present, to answer that question and other truly ambitious questions. So tonight, we're going to share a little bit of the work that our elementary social science curriculum adoption team went through. We'll learn about their process, we'll learn about what the team looked at as in materials that they reviewed, and we're going to kind of learn a little bit about the curriculum and the materials and the pilots that they went through. And we have a couple of representatives from that team. The team had different grade levels of teachers on it. It also included teachers from every single elementary school in our district. So Jenny Larson did a lot of the leadership on that team. She's our elementary teaching and learning TOSA. Dan McCusker and Rachel Hay are two teacher representatives from that team. So I want to share also a little bit about our social science progression that we have gone through as a district over the last few years. And in, in 2019, 20, we went through our first large adoption with social science materials in grades nine through 12. And then the following year, we did the same work, but we did it with our sixth through eighth grade. And at the time, we chose not to go through an elementary adoption, mostly because we had been catching up on some other adoptions and our teachers were really at capacity at the elementary level with the reading, the writing, and the math adoptions that they had just gone through and were learning those materials. And then, as you know, remember, and are living through it still, the pandemic hit and that really further delayed this adoption. And but in fall of 2021, the teacher, teaching and learning department recruited a team of teachers and they really embarked on what it means to teach social science in today's world. And just so you know, that also means that this is a shortened adoption period, much like our elementary science curriculum. And our next social science adoption will begin in 2025. So we had a few objectives when we went out for this adoption and started to do our research. And we had to really review what the social science standards were. And the Oregon Department of Education asks us as educators to teach really comprehensive social science education. So we had to dig into those. What did they mean? What were they about? How do we teach that in our classrooms? We really had to also look at the new ethnic study standards that were required by the Oregon Department of Ed. And then there's also another component that went through and it's SB 13. And that's legislation that's really around tribal history, shared history, where we have to teach about our past, right? Our indigenous cultures that inhabited not just Sherwood, but Oregon, and focused on the nine confederated tribes, which is included in this adoption process. And we then analyzed resources that were already used in our classrooms. There's a lot of great things that teachers are doing and we wanted to make sure that we looked at a curriculum that we could use those things as well. And we learned about the inquiry approach and what that meant. And our teachers are going to share a little bit of that with you and their experience that they went through in the classroom. And Jenny's gonna talk even deeper about the different aspects and the importance of the inquiry approach as we move through this adoption. And finally, we go through and we review multiple materials and we try to figure out which ones are best for our students and cover all those areas. Okay. Now I'm going to introduce Jenny Larson again. She's our elementary teaching and learning TOSA and she's gonna talk a little bit more in depth about the social science process and the inquiry learning process.
Good evening, Board Chair Hecker, Dr. Cordy and board members. We brought together a team of teacher leaders representing different grade levels and buildings. And we came together to discuss what skills we wanted students to leave our classrooms with in terms of social sciences. The team agreed on this vision statement to guide our social science adoption work. Our vision is students learning social science will be empathetic, critical thinkers who explore multiple perspectives to understand the past, observe the present, and develop a broader view of community and culture in order to navigate and impact the world. After we went through the visioning process and carefully studied and reviewed the standards, it was clear that we needed to adjust our approach to social science instruction. So we looked at the literature and current research on impactful instructional practices in social sciences and discovered the C3 framework and the inquiry approach. The C3 framework for social studies is a guide that was developed by national social studies organizations and the CCSSO. The framework ultimately envisioned social studies instruction as an inquiry arc. The C3 framework for social studies state standards is a powerful guide to help each state strengthen instruction in the social studies by establishing fewer, clearer, and higher standards for instructions in civics, economics, geography, and history, kindergarten through high school. The inquiry model starts with a compelling question and a planned inquiry. Students then embark on an investigation which requires research and critical thinking. As they move through the project and design-based inquiry, they elevate source, sorry, they evaluate sources and use evidence to support their investigation. Finally, students share their conclusions and have an opportunity to take informed action. To hear more about what this looks like in the classroom, we have two teachers here tonight who will share information about the units that they piloted. I'd like to introduce Rachel Hay, second grade teacher at Middleton, and Dan McCusker, fifth grade teacher at Hoxview.
Good evening, Dr. Cordy, Chair Hecker and board members. Our unit started out with an inquiry question, which was, how can we respond to our changing landscapes? And using tools such as Google Earth and timestamp pictures, students got to research and learn about urbanization and other changes that happen to the world around us. So students explored how people depend on natural resources, how they meet their needs for using like food and water and air and they use electronic resources to learn about the natural resources in different areas in Oregon and beyond. And so we discussed and explored how people depend on these resources and that can influence the way that they live. At the end of each unit, there is a call to action where students consider what they've learned and then they can create a project. And so that project has an authentic impact. Some examples of this authentic project could be like a brochure if students were to go camping or hiking and how the things they could do to not change their landscape or the things that would change their landscape or make an informational poster about the world around them. Next up is Dan and he'll share the work from his classroom.
All right, good evening, Dr. Cordy, Chair Hecker and board members. This spring, my team decided to pilot part of the 13 colonies unit. And the lessons that we completed addressed the question centered around whether the settlements of Jamestown and Plymouth were examples of cooperation or conflict. And they looked at this through the interactions that European leaders had with indigenous people and the interactions they had with each other. Students worked in small groups to analyze a variety of sources throughout this unit. The sources consisted of both primary and secondary documents. For example, one of the sources students learned about was the May-Fowler Compact. It was their job to then gather evidence pertaining to examples of cooperation and conflict within the settlements of Jamestown and Plymouth and then utilize those sources in their upcoming task. The culminating task that they were required to complete was centered around an infographic where they were to demonstrate their claim about whether their assigned settlement was built through cooperation, conflict, or both. And interestingly enough, majority of my students arrived at the conclusion that it was a combination of cooperation and conflict that ultimately settled both Jamestown and Plymouth. It was very apparent that the students had done a thorough job of analyzing the sources and they were able to select multiple pieces of evidence to support their claims. Being the first time that I was doing an inquiry journey kind of lesson, it was kind of a little unnerving to not just be giving them the content, but to watch them kind of absorb it through these sources. And when I popped around and heard those discussions happening, it was very relieving as a teacher to see that the learning in fact was happening. And it wasn't me that was directly giving it to them. They were discovering it through the primary sources. I'm very excited about the possibilities that this curriculum will bring for our students. I feel like it really moves social sciences in a direction that is going to teach them to become historians and, and be able to use those skills and apply them to a variety of topics through their education. So, thank you.
All right. So with all of our curriculums and instructional materials that we bring and propose for adoption, we always offer a curriculum and instructional materials review time. Again, we're really excited. This, this platform is, you are able to access it online. It's currently on the teaching and learning webpage. And we had this available at our community review night on June 2nd for families or community members to come and see. And then in addition, like our other elementary curriculums, we send it out via communication through the principal weekly message. And so that will go out this week. And again, all of this feedback will be gathered and we will bring it to the board and before our second read in July. Any questions?
Thank you. So I just wanted to, some people may ask, you know, we've gotten till 2025 before we start this over again. We're sitting here at the end of the 21, 22 school year and happy to, you know, kick this question to Mr. Bennett if it's more appropriate there. But is, is it required for us to adopt a curriculum now even though we'll need to re-adopt in 2025 in order to meet Division 22 assurances?
Yes, that is correct. So we are up against a deadline. We actually worked out with the Department of Education and their curriculum and teaching and learning department to get to this year. And then we will adopt this one to be in compliance with Division 22 standards. Our hope is that we'll really truly learn the inquiry process and throughout this adoption because this, these materials lend themselves so nicely to that. And then we can take that learning and that education as educators and teachers and move that forward into any curriculum.
Great, I've got two more questions if I may, I'm sure. So one on the inquiry process, is this now, and I apologize for not getting these questions to you in advance, but the, the inquiry process, is that now the standard for social science teaching? Just like if you're to look at best practice, evidence base of what is optimal for kids to present information in a unbiased way and allow kids to be able to draw their own conclusions and be able to learn. That's the new standard. So by adopting an inquiry approach now, I assume. That's the new standard. So by adopting an inquiry approach now, I assume that that is going to be the standard moving forward. We aren't going to change from that. Is that right?
That is correct. So the C three framework, which is a document that guides the inquiry process, it also guides just critical thinking in general. And so it asks us to, instead of feeding information to students, dates, things they won't remember, events. It's actually like, here are some actual documents that came from the Plymouth Colony. Read these and what do you think? Was there conflict involved? When you read these newspaper articles from that time, did they, did they get along? Was there conflict or was it both? Which, you know, as Dan said, his students determined that it was both because they are critically thinking and they're do going deeply into the primary source materials and they're coming out with their own conclusion. And I think often and we get, we get stuck where we're feeding this material to students and then they don't have the opportunity to critically think. And so I would argue that that's exactly what this is doing and we're getting back to what does inquiry really mean? It means that we're teaching our students to read and research and discover and then make conclusions based off of that. And, and that they, they learn through that, they're engaged through that, empowered perhaps.
That's wonderful. And then I, the last question I have, we, we talked a lot in some previous years about digital citizenship and how important, I mean, students now have access to more information than certainly when I was going to school. When Mr. Smith was just starting his teaching career. But I, back then you had, you had the encyclopedia, right? And you didn't really have all of the, all of the options. So I'd be really interested from the teacher's perspectives. What, what is it? Is this helping in that effort that we have of how do you, how do you tell what is a valid versus a valid source versus an opinion piece and really helping students to kind of develop those tools of being able to tell the difference?
All right. I'm gonna let them answer.
Yeah, I mean, we had a great conversation around that and we talked about how when you're a historian, you need a variety of sources and you need to, you need to be a critical thinker of those sources that you're looking at. And I mean, from simply looking at, you know, where the web page is in, is it a dot org, is it a dot com, is it a dot edu? Having conversations centered around that, but also, yeah, I mean, just bringing that into it and having that be a part of the conversation is really important. And then when we have those primary sources, they're, they're there, like there, this was an interview, this was a diary or a journal article that was, you know, published and written. And so they're reflecting back onto that. So I think I think that's basically what we've been doing and it was, it was great to be a part of.
Thank you very much. And so we did hear a comment tonight on this, right? And so for clarification purposes for those watching, when you say that there's on there, it's, there's online access on the teaching and learning webpage. Can you specify exactly where that's at for people that are watching that don't know, that maybe have never gone and visited that before so they can go and review it?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do my best. So when you go on the Sherwood School District webpage, you're gonna click on departments and when you get to departments, you're gonna click on teaching and learning. From teaching and learning, there should be a box that shows up, I believe it says instructional materials adoptions. From there, you click on it, you're going to see links on how to log in. It'll walk you through the steps on how to log in. You input, it directs you to the inquiry journeys webpage, you input your email and your name, I believe. And then you get full access to everything our teachers see. And this is a, this is a platform. So it's not a, students don't have a device in their hands. Where like maybe they'd see a video or something like that. The teacher has access to the platform and then maybe they print materials or they show a video or something like that. But it's not like on the device of a student. So there's not like a student facing version and a teacher facing version, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. Thank you. I just wanted to be able to provide that information for.
And I think that's right.
Yeah, it sounds right to me, but just so everybody else, you know, thank you.
Any additional questions? Whoops. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really, my mic was off. Appreciate it. Like I said, do not feel obligated to stay. Okay, so we will move on to talk about drug and alcohol prevention plan and I would welcome Mr. Bennett to the podium.
Thank you very much, Chair Hecker. Superintendent Cordy, Board of Directors, we're excited to talk to you this evening about our drug and alcohol prevention plan. Well, tonight we'll talk about a few things. We'll talk a little bit about the, we'll cover the process we went through to get here. We'll talk about the basic elements of the plan. This plan will bring us fully into compliance with the rule that's linked into the plan here. Most aspects of this OAR were in place prior to us doing this work, but there were a few things. An example would be like a public information campaign that we needed to get put in place to come into compliance and put it all into one place where it is all written down in one document strategically put together. And this will need to be reviewed annually by staff and improved. That's also part of this rule. Turned out to be a great process to really review what we were doing regarding drug and alcohol prevention, bring people together and putting a plan in place to continually improve our practice. The entire plan is attached to the summary for your review and we'll bring this back for second read in July. We'll also talk, second read and adoption in July. We'll also talk about how this fits into our MTSS plan or our multi-tiered system of support. And we'll go through that in, as well in this presentation. And I think it will make sense when we get there, what that looks like. So just a basic look of the process we followed. The first thing we did was form a steering committee. I'm here with two members of the steering committee, Chelsea Bukovich and Mary Massey. Chelsea is the district's mental health TOSA and Mary is the district's mental health coordinator. We also had Diane Lambert, who was our youth contact drug and alcohol coordinator at the high school. Teresa Swake, who's a high school associate principal and Heather Inn, who is our youth substance abuse team coordinator and the campus monitor at the high school. So the six of us served as the steering committee. We also, then we, we then formed a team of stakeholders to really work on developing this plan and that team included teachers, administrators, counselors, mental health specialists, classified staff, community members and law enforcement brought all together to work on this plan. And we really took a process, we really first looked at what do we have in place? Just identifying what's in place, bringing this team of stakeholders who would really know together, like the health teachers knew better what was in the health lessons around drug and alcohol prevention than anyone else. So we made sure to have them in the room and on the team. We reviewed the work of other school districts. What were other districts doing around us? In fact, many of them are working on the same piece right now. We reviewed the statute, statutory requirements. What do we have in place, making sure we're in compliance with all the things that the legislation asked us to do? We started with the following questions. This is sort of how we built our process. What's in place and working well? What do we need to keep doing and it's going pretty well? What's in place, but we need to get better at? And what do we need to add to the plan in order to make it the best it can be? As you've heard us talk about, our chief strategy for our student investment account plan and for improvement in general is the development of a multi-tiered system of support. We haven't, we've talked a little bit with this board about that. But it's important that you understand this is an evidence and research-based strategy that leads to great outcomes for kids. And it only makes sense that we would fold any work we're doing into this broader model of how we do business or how we're working to do business. And MTSS model is actually built on a medical model. It was originally called response to instruction or RTI. It's sort of evolved over time and in the last 20 years, it's now called a multi-tiered system of support. And basically it's based on this, that if you take it on a medical model, about 80% of people respond to standard prevention things, healthy diet, exercise, getting enough sleep, mindfulness, things of that nature. There's about 20% of people who need all of that, but they need a little extra help. Maybe they need some medication or physical therapy in addition to diet, healthy exercise, all of those things. And there are some people who need more intense intervention, perhaps a surgery, and those are at the top of the pyramid. About 20 years ago, people started applying this to be, to academic models and it's proven quite successful. On the academic side of the house, tier one or the bottom tier that all students need are things like quality instruction, quality assessment, high quality instructional materials. And what we call a guaranteed and viable curriculum, which means all students have the same opportunity to learn. Tier two would be more like flex at the middle and high school where students in small groups have opportunities to get extra help from their teacher in addition to all of those things. And tier three might look like an extra reading intervention class in addition to your regular language arts class. And it's a tiered approach that really proves quite effective. So what we've done in this plan is we've built this into a tiered model for drug and alcohol prevention. There's tier one supports that all kids need. Access to drug prevention education, things of that nature. Tier two interventions, which some students need in smaller groups. And tier three for our most intense needs. And that's the basis on which we built the plan was a model of this. And we're working on this plan for our academic systems and our behavior system as well. And so this plan fits into this model as well. So when we talk about what we're doing, we've broken into tier one, tier two and tier three. So on that note, I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea Bukovich and she's going to talk about our tier one sports.
Thank you, Gary. Dr. Cordy, Chair Hecker and Board of Directors. Looking at tier one supports, as Gary mentioned, these are supports and services or interventions that all students are getting. 100% of the students are getting these supports. We, some of that is coming from the adopted health curriculum that we already have in place. That we have this K 12 scope and sequence that also includes plans for family involvement, opting out for those that wish to do that. And there's a professional learning plan. So that's something that we already had in place. That's where we pulled our health teachers in and really looked at what are we already doing that all students are getting? With that, we know that grades nine, 11 and 12 are not necessarily getting that health curriculum. So we needed to put additional lessons in place. Those are happening during homeroom and flight times. With that, kind of jumping down a little bit to those public information campaigns, that's another place that we can use some additional lessons. So for example, this year we did a fentanyl campaign. Just really teaching students six through 12 grades about the dangers of these fake pills. That was something that when we looked at neighboring districts, they have also done some campaigns around that. It's been in the news a lot lately. And so that was one of those public information campaigns that we really wanted to make sure that we addressed with students sooner rather than later. It was also a way, working with our SRO and the police department who is also addressing it from their end. So those are some of the examples of some additional lessons that we'd be looking at. In terms of social emotional learning, we have been integrating that into classrooms. Gosh, I'm trying to think, probably five or six years ago now, we started with our culture of care at the elementary level and it's kind of worked its way up. And that's really looking at teaching a skill set and lessons that are really helping students to make healthy choices. Not just healthy choices in their social interactions and with self-management and emotional regulation, but also healthy choices around drugs and alcohol and, and who you're surrounding yourself with and how you're seeking support when you need it. And so those are things that we're doing at all levels right now, K 12. Gary touched a little bit on our youth contract or youth contact drug and alcohol counselor. That is a contract that we have. She is housed in the, at Sherwood High School. And so she also does parent information nights. Those are done at our transition meetings for eighth into ninth grade, but then also just putting them out there for other parents as needed throughout the school year. Again, the public information campaign that is, allows us to address things that come up as needed, that are really pertinent in the community that our kids may have access to, like the fentanyl campaign. We also have a piece in there about transition programming between levels. So we know that that transition from fifth grade to sixth grade and then from eighth grade to ninth grade, while it's very exciting, can be very anxiety-producing. And we want to make sure that we're supporting students during those transitions so that they continue to make healthy decisions. And then we also have a list of resources on the Sherwood School District website just in terms of if families need support, students need support, helplines, places to go for drug and alcohol counseling, things like that are available. So again, these are tier one supports that are really looking at addressing all students. And then we also have tier two and tier three supports, which I'm gonna have Mary come up and speak about.
Thank you, Chelsea. Thank you, Chair Hecker, Superintendent Cordy and Board for having us here tonight. I'm here to talk to you tonight about our tier two supports. Our tier two supports are those targeted preventative and in prevention and intervention services to support Sherwood School District students, parents and staff members. I know you've heard talk so far tonight about some of our counseling supports. Our youth contact drug and alcohol counselor is housed in the high school. Next year, we're probably going to have her also a day, day and a half at the middle school to help with some more individualized treatments. And I'll talk about teen intervening in a moment. She will also help with that aspect of our, of our program. Our youth contact person, our drug and alcohol counselor, she's going to work with those identified students. And those identified students can come from administrators, school counselors, from our behavior team, from mental health care coordinator or for our mental health specialist in the school. They may also come from staff members that have concerns about a student or a parent that calls in concerned about their student. And then our youth contact person or our mental health specialists in the schools will meet and do some brief interventions, do a brief screening with them to see if there are some things of concern there. Our mental health specialists, we have now, thank you very much, by the way, we have a full-time mental health specialist in the middle school and in the high school. And we can work on these tier two interventions with them. And again, they will get referrals those same way. From staff members, from school counselors, from parents, from other students, a lot of times, bringing us concerns about usage. That's where the, sorry, the one-on-one support will start to happen. We are going to be adopting the teen intervening program along with most of the school districts in Washington County. And what the teen intervening program is, it's an evidence-based program that will, it consists of a comprehensive screening, brief intervention and a referral to treatment model of care program. The teen intervening program consists of about three sessions. And that will probably start with our youth contact drug and alcohol counselor. But we will train also the mental health specialist care coordinators to also conduct the teen intervening program, just so we can make sure we have that ability to reach more students. The teen intervening program again is about three sessions. Two sessions, one-on-one with the student and then a third session with the student and parents to help with that education piece and support piece. We also have with the flex time, two days a week in the high schools, we also have that opportunity for tier two supports to offer more individualized, one-on-one support or small group support during that flex time. Our tier three supports are for our highest level of, of need given. And I've lost my notes on our tier three. Oh, thank you. I'm just dropping my notes all over the place. I knew they were here somewhere. So our tier three is more intensive individualized interventions. And that also will begin with our youth substance abuse teams. So when that level of concern through teen intervening, if those kids or students level out at a higher need of care than what those three sessions that teen intervening can provide. We also have our youth substance abuse team, which can help us develop years ago. And why that for short is a diversion, but it's also an intervention and and prevention program, in my opinion. And it was, it's in a partnership that we set up with the City of Sherwood, the Police Department, County Juvenile Department, and I guess the school district. Students can choose to enter YSAT to reduce their disciplinary consequences at school and from a law enforcement perspective, provided they meet certain criteria. So that is one way in which we can support students in that higher level of need. Also, higher level of need, again, comes into play our counseling where our youth contact drug and alcohol counselor and our mental health specialists, which include also our clinical intern program that we have at every level throughout the district that can meet one-on-one with those highly intensive kids and families that might need that extra support. And there's also the care coordinator program, and that's where for those students that do need that higher level of care, we can, I can get them court, I can help them get set up with outside services. A lot of times that includes meeting with the family one-on-one, figuring out what the client's needs are, maybe what their insurance can and can't do, helping them find, maybe get more insurance or get them on insurance if they don't already have that. And then I work with transitioning kids into programs. Maybe it's intensive outpatient. It could be residential. And then working on their return back to the school district with reentry plans so that we can best support those students in need and working hand in hand with those outside programs.
So our next steps, one will be to develop a plan for staff training. What's, train them in basic drug and alcohol prevention strategies, and also about what the plan is and what their role is in it, depending on that. Continue to work on our multi-tiered system of support, especially systems and behavior and mental health. We've done more work on our systems on the academic side, and we need to more fully develop those systems on the mental health and behavior side. And then just learning from implementation and revising the plan annually. I think that's a big piece. Anytime you take on a new way of doing things, you always learn quite a bit right off the bat, and then you figure out what you learned, regroup and improve it for the next year and make that just a constant cycle of improvement. And those are our immediate next steps. Any questions about this?
I don't have a question so much as to say, I think this is incredible. This is something that every district needs, and drug abuse has been a problem for as long as since when I was in school, and we never had anything like this. And so to have these resources readily available for parents to just go right to and have all of that coordination and all of that support is, is just great. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Thank the team. They did a ton of work.
Yeah, thanks. I've got a few questions. I just, the teen intervening program, at what kind of entry point does that look like? I mean, where are we at with the kid that, that meets criteria to enter teen intervening? Are we, is that just kind of the general entry point for, I've got a concern about somebody drinking, or I've got a concern about somebody using, or I found something and I'm a parent and I want to start this process, and then you evaluate from there about whether they need additional supports in level three, or what does that look like?
Yes, good question. The teen intervening program, those referrals can come from anywhere. Parents of concern, if teachers are noticing something with those students, other students are concerned, we can bring them in. It's for mild to moderate usage. And that brief, that screening tool will help us determine that level of care, level of need needed. If they do level out or needing higher level of care, that's when they'll go into care coordination, and we'll work out those higher levels of care.
Okay, I just want somebody to get stuck in like the teen intervening program, and they get to session three, and it's real clear they need additional support, and we have to go through some other process to get there.
Yeah, if that's the case, and there will be students that that will happen, where those three sessions maybe just weren't enough. Things were maybe deeper than we first recognized. And it will be fairly seamless. They'll move right into care coordination, and we'll be able to will just give us more information and helping getting them the proper care after they've gone through teen intervening as well.
That's great. And where are we at in terms of capacity? I am fully in favor of moving this and a lot of other interventions and supports forward. My, I just don't have a good sense. After we've added the mental health specialist that we've added this year, where is our capacity in terms of additional caseload support for a program like this so that we aren't that we have the capacity to meet the need?
You can answer that one. Yes.
Well, the short answer is far better than before, where when I started in this district, we had Mary oversee all of our mental health things, and now we have Mary and Chelsea behind us. And we also have the mental health specialist at both levels and the youth contact drug and alcohol counselor. So that's a substantial buildup in capacity. Is it ever enough? Probably not, but far more capacity to do it than we've had in the past. We're also starting a program at the high school. It's going to be called the Student Success Center or the Student Support Center. I think it's a working title, but it will provide some opportunities in the school day for kids to be able to get some support around not only academics and attendance kind of things, but also if they're struggling with mental health or drugs and alcohol, they'll be able to get some support within the school day. So they sometimes the schedules can be a real barrier. So there's some things that will improve our capacity a little bit, I think. And on top of that, the clinical interns that Mary refers to can help with some of our lower-level cases where that's just additional time that we get that bringing people into the field and helping us serve more kids.
That's really great. And I think those clinical intern programs are fantastic two-way learning opportunities and provide important support that isn't otherwise available in the community. So I just, I think this is an area where I personally have a lot of interest in kind of keeping tabs on how are we doing with capacity, because that's it's very important for us to ask the question, even if the capacity isn't there to a hundred percent meet the need in the way that we would ideally like to, because that starts the conversation, identifies how we need to move forward. But I think we need to just keep asking those questions and making sure the board knows are we oversubscribed? Are we undersubscribed? Where, where are we at so that we can, as we start thinking about future investments? How do we make sure that we're able to meet this need, which is critically difficult to meet in the community?
Agreed.
Thank you.
I have one final question.
As far as parental involvement goes, you mentioned, you know, if a student reports or if a teacher reports, I'm assuming that any type of contact or intervention with a student would, there would be parent communication first, so that the parents are fully involved and aware.
For sure.
Okay.
Yeah, parents would be involved.
Without contacting the parents first and involving them.
Not that I, none, right? There would be no steps. I can't think of a step that would be taken without parental involvement. Potentially, if it was law enforcement or something like that, that might be different, but in terms of the school, no.
Okay, just before, so like before you would talk to the student, the parent would know kind of what the concerns were or why.
Before they would enter any of these programs or anything of that nature, there would be parent contact.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So Mr. Bennett, you can, you can stay right where you are. It looks like you're up there for.
I'm up there. Okay. So moving on to the next topic, we are just putting this plan up officially for thirty-day review so that the board and the community have a chance to review, provide us any comments, and we'll bring it back at the July board meeting for a second read and proposed adoption.
Great, thank you. Ms. Carol. First read for K-5 Elementary Social Science.
Okay, the Teaching and Learning Department in Sherwood staff are proposing the Instructional Materials Inquiry Journeys for adoption for, to be used in our K-5 Elementary Social Science classrooms. And we're putting it up for first read, and we'll bring it back for second read at the July board meeting.
Great, thank you. And it looks like world languages for a second read.
Okay. Last month, we proposed adopting Reporteros for our world language program. At the same time, we shared the materials and asked the community for feedback. And the materials were available online, and we had a total of three respondents during the review process. One respondent shared that the platform went deeper than repeating phrases, and students would be better, would be able to better understand the language and culture because of this. They also noted that there were multiple opportunities to read and write throughout the text. The respondent noted that English or first language captions may be useful for some students. Two respondents were concerned that their students would be forced to learn Spanish, but did not address the quality of the instructional materials. In Sherwood, we do not require the students to take Spanish or a world language, but it is an acceptance requirement of many universities. We also hosted a community review night on June 2nd. We had one parent attend the event. The parent did not fill out an online review form, but did indicate some concerns about only offering Spanish. And tonight, we are bringing the world language materials Reporteros up for second read and adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the world languages program Reporteros for all secondary grades and as presented by Ms. Carol and the team.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. That's four to one. Okay, so Ms. Carol, so we'll do a second read. Oh, sorry. No, it is interim elementary science.
That's right. All right. So last month, we proposed adopting Mystery Science for our K-5 Elementary Science Instructional Materials. At the same time, we shared the materials with the community and again, asked for feedback. The materials were available online, and we had one respondent. And the respondent shared that the platform was user-friendly, the lessons weren't too technical or tedious, and the videos are engaging and fun to watch. These materials were also available at the community review night on June 2nd. Again, we had one parent attend. The parent did not address the science materials, but did share their thoughts on the instructional materials used for health and concerns with state requirements around human growth and sexuality education. We made a note of those concerns, and we'll add them to the feedback that we've been collecting and reviewing. And but tonight, we're bringing the elementary K-5 Instructional Materials Adoption, Mystery Science, up for second read and adoption.
Okay, is there a motion?
Oh, Madam Chair, can I ask a question first, just to be really clear? I just want to be very clear. Mystery Science has nothing to do with the health curriculum or any, any of those issues that that individual raised. That is a separate curriculum that has already been adopted. Is that correct?
That is a second, separate curriculum that has been adopted. It had its own curriculum review night, I believe, in two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd move that we adopt the elementary science curriculum, Mystery Science, as presented by Ms. Carol and the team.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries, four to one. Thank you, Ms. Carol.
Thank you.
So now I guess it's, it's my turn, so to talk about interim superintendent contract. So on June 2nd, last Thursday, the Board of Directors was able to interview a candidate to serve as interim superintendent. So this is interim, it would be for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. At that time, we took action to extend an offer of employment and were able to negotiate that. So this evening, the recommendation or the requested action would be to approve a one-year interim superintendent contract for Dr. Jeremy Lyon for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the interim superintendent contract for Dr. Lyon for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Is there a second? Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries, five to zero. Congratulations. Thank you. So last but not least, this afternoon, the board had six interviews with, with potential candidates for the board vacancy that I will be leaving. It is to finish a, it's a one-year term at this point. So we have six amazing candidates, and at this time, we'll go ahead and take a vote of the six and tally that vote. You can fold up. I've never actually tallied about. Someone else has always done this, so I'll make sure my glasses are in proper order. Okay, we have a new, we, we have a vote. So we have three votes for Jeffrey Lee and two votes for Ian Swanson. So Jeffrey Lee will be our newly appointed board member. And at this time, just to make it official, I would recommend that we take an action and a motion on that. Is there a motion or to confirm the vote?
Madam Chair, I motion that we appoint Jeffrey Lee as the, into the vacant board position at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, and what we are voting on is to uphold the vote. This is not, we've actually already voted, so this would be to uphold the vote. Any questions, comments? Okay, at this point, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. So with that, we do have a couple additional public comments that were not related to a board agenda. So we have a couple people in person, Steve Robertson, you are welcome. Okay. Gotcha. Okay, it's appreciated. Thank you. And Lindsay Broderick? Oh, double thank you. Okay, we have one online, one online comment. It looks like it will be Mr. Rose.
Sean Garland, Sherwood. Sherwood School Board Directors, thank you for your time in considering my comment. I would like to request that the Sherwood School Board consider joining other local school districts such as Tiger Tuallaton, Lake Oswego, and Westland-Wilsonville in prohibiting guns from all Sherwood School campuses. In two thousand and twenty-one, the Oregon Legislature passed Senate Bill five-five-four, which gave individual school districts the power to choose whether to prohibit guns on school grounds, regardless of whether a gun owner has a concealed handgun license. I would ask that the Sherwood School Board to consider adopting this policy. This policy would be intended to increase student safety and not as a political statement. It would also increase district and law enforcement's authority when interacting with visitors or general public on school property or at school-sponsored events. I respectfully appreciate your consideration of this matter. Thank you, Sean Garland.
Thank you. And with that, we have completed all of the agenda items. Thank you so much for staying with us. The next board meeting will be held July twenty seventh. So we'll see you then. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.